At our meeting now. For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve 2 minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to 2 minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for 5 minutes as a representative of a group or organization. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County versus statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your only independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. And our first line here is adoption of the agenda, and I think, Robin, we have some adjustments to our agenda.
We do. We would like to ask that the Design Guideline Consolidation Project be moved to the very end. The 1022 Ackland is a violation, but they have submitted a plan that meets the design guidelines, and so an administrative permit has been issued. So that's off the agenda altogether. 1502 Cedar, there have been requests from two commissioners to pull that from consent, so we'll put that at the end of the agenda. And 1717 Villa Place is a violation, and they've requested a deferral. You've received, I think, 2 public comments regarding that. And then there was a request from the public, and I'm not sure if they're here or not, so if you don't mind, I'll just ask, is there anyone here to speak to the Hume Street project? No, so you can disregard that. So we just need to know whether or not you want to defer 1717 Villa Place and adopt the rest of the changes.
I do have some legal question to our new legal counsel, which is, can you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, everybody had before. My name is Alex Dickerson, so I'll be taking over Susan Jones's role, so happy to answer any questions.
Okay. On the 1717 Villa Place, can you give us some legal comment on, since it is under the show cause, violation of show cause, please give us some direction on that?
Sure. I understand that you all have a rule when it comes to applicants, people who actually have a permit, rather, that you require them to show cause before a deferral. This is a little bit different because it's someone who does not have a permit. So my understanding is you all don't really have a set policy for that, so it's up to debate whether or not this individual gets a deferral, or if they have to show cause. You get to set your own standard for what a non-permit holder has to show to get a first deferral. And my only recommendation would be that after your debate and your determination about what needs to be shown to get a deferral, that you just ask staff to consider a policy for that, so that down the road, if you get the same situation, you'll be treating the non-permit holder consistently if there's a violation down the road with a different applicant.
And within line, when we have a deferral, not the show cause deferral, but we also give them 2 deferrals before, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. That's consistent with your rules.
Yeah, consistent with the rules.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions to legal on that? Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve the revision and adoption to the agenda?
Is there discussion on the deferral?
Yes. Yes, there will be. It was just procedural, right, Robin?
Yes, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but yes, you need to decide whether or not you're going to accept the deferral.
At this time?
Probably at this time to approve the agenda.
You can actually approve your agenda and then address it when it comes on the agenda at whatever point. That's fine.
Would that be okay? That's reasonable? All right. Is there a motion?
Move approval for the agenda keeping the request for deferral, 1717 on the agenda.
For discussion. Okay. There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. None opposed? So we have adopted the agenda and the revisions. Any council members here today? I see none. And approval of minutes of November 20, 2019. Is there a motion to approve, or are there questions?
I'm to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved.
This month's consent agenda includes 924 McFerran Avenue, new construction addition; 845 Glen Avenue, new construction, outbuilding or addition. The agenda and the screen say different things. I'm not sure which. 108 Rosebank, setback determination; 1312 Shelton, new construction addition and setback determination; 1502 Cedar Lane has been moved to new business; 1231 Fifth Avenue North, new construction addition and outbuilding, setback determination; 521 Fatherland Street, fence and setback determination; and 2300 10th Avenue South, new construction addition. Staff has reviewed these applications, determined that they meet their respective design guidelines, and recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions? Is there a motion to move consent agenda? Approve.
Move approval with the changes noted.
Okay. Just a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. None opposed? That passes. Consent agenda passes.
This application is a construction project at 1404 Lillian Street. It is, in the recommendation, described as an infill. Now, they are keeping the foundation, the parts of the front and side walls of the house, and adding on a new front porch, a new upper story, and adding on to the rear. And because it's a non-contributing house, and they're adding essentially more than they'll be keeping, it was better, more applicable to be treated under the guidelines for infill. And some of you may recall that a very similar or nearly identical application was reviewed for this property in 2016, essentially the same thing, adding an upper story, new front And that was approved with conditions in 2016. That 2016 permit has long since expired, and in wishing to renew the project, the applicant would like to have the original submission considered without the conditions that were approved or included in the 2016 approval. So what is proposed, again, keeping the foundation portions of the side walls, would be to expand the house to the rear and add an upper story and add a new full-width shed roofed porch. I will, I noticed in reviewing the application again, that the proposal shows a footprint that is 28 feet wide, whereas Metro Records have the building as 26 feet wide. It's a difference that doesn't... We have a request for napkins at the front? Sorry. Sorry. I'm trying to keep that quiet there. Either one of those widths would be appropriate, but it is important to know, so we know what is being approved, the inspector knows what's being reviewed. So we would just like those plans corrected if the submitted plans are the ones that are not correct. As I said, there will be a new upper story that's added as well. This essentially increases the height of the building. The final height will be appropriate, compatible with surrounding houses. What's important to distinguish here is that the front dormer, as proposed, does stack directly over the primary front wall, whereas dormers historically, and dormers that the commission approves, are typically required to be stepped back at least 2 feet from the first-story wall below. And that was a condition that was approved, required in the approval in 2016, that the dormer steps back 2 feet. And the reason for that is, as I explained somewhat in the staff recommendation, historically on a side gabled house, like what is proposed, when there is a shed roof porch, the front porch roof is overframed and kind of rides up on the rafters of the primary roof, so that the point where the roof meets the primary rafters is up and back a few feet from the front wall of the house. And it's at that point where the 2 roofs meet that is normally corresponds to where the knee wall is located inside the building. That is where the front of a dormer is typically located. Very similar rule of thumb tends to be true for other forms of houses. Either side gabled houses with front gabled porches or hipped-roofed houses typically have roughly that same amount of step back for any dormer. And also, this is a craftsman-style house, but it seems to be true for Victorian houses as well. And here's, you know, these are some in the Edgefield neighborhood, which is architecturally very similar to Lakeland Springs. It's just a little bit more accessible and photographable on the Sunday that I went around and took these pictures. So as you can see on houses where there's a sharp difference or a stronger, this more distinct break from the porch roof to the primary roof, and somewhere where it's nearly imperceptible, but slight change, that rule holds true. So getting back to the question of the 1404 Lillian Street, as I said, a permit was issued in 2016, and it expired really before much progress was done. In reissuing a current permit this year, the applicant started some work and actually did the, primarily, or just the front porch and front wall, adding, converting what had been a small partial width porch to a full-width shed roof porch. That porch has been constructed with the roof, the break in roof pitches, the roof of the porch back on the primary roof, as is typical of all those historic examples that I showed. So the staff recommendation, what we recommend for the front dormer is that the dormer follows the historic examples, and that the dormer wall be constructed so that it originates at the point where the pitch changes from the porch roof to the primary roof. You can see what I'm talking about there, that the porch roof meets the primary roof a few feet back from the front wall. So that's kind of the main condition of approval that staff is recommending here. Another difference between the current plans and what's, or the current house and what's being proposed, is that the window patterns and side elevations differ from those, between the house and the plans. You can see that there's a single in the front and then moving towards a pair and another pair at the rear of the building. The applicant stated that they weren't planning on changing the windows on the side elevation, and that was just a little confusing to me in reviewing the plans because it's not what was depicted on the plans. So another condition would be that whichever of those is, either the plans be corrected to reflect what is truly being proposed, or just that be clarified if the windows are to be changed. Summing all that up, and if you have questions, I can try to answer them. Staff recommends approval of the proposed construction of the new 1-1/2-story house with the following conditions: that the front wall dormer shall be stepped back 2 feet from the wall below; that the width, rhythm, and proportion of windows shall be typical of historic buildings; to be clarified on drawings if necessary; that staff should approve the window and door selections, along its roof color; and any other discrepancies in the drawings shall be clarified with corrected drawings if applicable, with final review of any changes to be approved by staff. Meeting those conditions, we find that this application meets the guidelines for Lakeland Springs neighborhood.
Thank you, Sean.
Sean, a quick question before we move into the applicant. It looks like, well, I'm not, maybe it's unclear in the drawings whether the windows will be replaced. It looks like in the photographs, they're metal windows with a false lights in them, and it seems like that if those were preserved, there's enough work going on in the house. Is there an opinion that staff has or precedent where making this kind of investment or these significant changes in a project where those windows would need to move towards compliance? Or would those be, a lot of that has to do with, is it existing, is it an addition? And I would think that there's maybe some legal wiggle room there, having an opinion about it, making, bringing it up for discussion so that it doesn't become an issue later. I don't know. I don't know if you have an answer now, but I...
I don't know if I do either. Some of these, some of the things I chalked up to, some of the limitations involved in buying stock plans and trying to fit that on to an existing structure. Buying stock plans and building from scratch is, you know, same as, you know, doing your own plans, but, you know, there is some, I kind of assumed some, I don't know if it's wiggle room or in-the-field adjustment would be necessary. And just the more I looked at it, the more, the less I was certain about, so we'd like to have some of those things clarified, if they are discrepancies. If they are just going to follow the plans and it looks like the drawings when it's done, then the inspector will be happy and we'll all go on our way.
Applicant?
First of all, I appreciate all your time today. As Sean stated, I had originally...
Can you please list your name and address, please?
Sure. Catherine Sullivan, 1404 Lillian Street. Initially, I received the permit in 2016 due to certain economic hardships as it related to this project whereby, when I did bring some receipts along, I had to prep the building, being that it's an older home, replacing floor joists and ceiling joists that they were to code, so that they were, where there was, we had to, dealt with termites, we had to replace them because of termites, and then others we had to replace because they weren't to code, to be able to support the second-story infrastructure. In addition to that, there was some significant issues as it relates to the extreme grading that you can see in that photo right there throughout time. We had to go, and I spent over $8,000, just trying to go underneath the house and level it, re-level, make sure that we're starting with an even playing field, if you will. So this resulted in a major delay for myself. So when I finally came back around to be able to ask to reissue the build permit, as well as the historic permit, in September of this year, it was, in fact, reissued without any of the prior contingencies. So I did, as you can see, start the construction, which we started with the porch and replacing the front porch. When we got to the point of the dormer is when we realized that, well, there were a lot of concerns, and I actually have a letter from the lead architect, as well as testimony from some of the framers, that felt that because of the nature of the gradient that my house resides on, and because of the past erosion issues, that it would make a lot more sense to have the dormer, as it was originally planned, residing on the front-facing wall, because that wall rests on about 5 feet of concrete. And that's the only part of my house that's never shifted throughout time. But the other concern was that the elevation, in order to accommodate, just per building codes, a front room where one could stand up in, the ridge line would have to increase to where it could potentially exceed what is mandated by the historic codes as far as the ridge line goes, if we did, in fact, have to move it 2 feet backwards. So aside from the structural integrity, we were caught up in a catch-22 of how high we were going to have to raise the ridge line if we weren't, in fact, have to move it 2 feet back. Not to mention, just aesthetically, the usage of a front room that's an 8 by 12 is not really very accommodating as a bedroom, but that's the least of our concerns. Again, primary concerns would be because of the previous erosion problems with this grade that the house resides on, it would be a lot more structurally sound to have it reside on that front-facing wall, not to mention the economic hardships I've already incurred as a result of some of these concerns, in that when I reached out to historic after the permit order had been issued and said, hey, just so you know, this is what we're running into, I was told I had to put on the brakes and wait an additional 30 days, which has cost me money and my builder money, as well as over thousands of dollars of materials I've been sitting in my backyard going to rot. So, you know, based on those 2 principles alone, not to mention, I know Mr. Alexander had pulled up some Edgefield examples. I've got about a dozen examples just within my 2 blocks of dormers that do, in fact, not sit 2 feet back, and I had brought some of those pictures along as well. So I guess there's a threefold prong as far as why I'm seeking this accommodation and variance to the suggested guidelines.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions to the applicant this time? Okay. Thank you.
If I could, since I still have, as it relates to the economic hardship, what would need to be done in addition to what I've already done to ready the house, to have a dormer that, in fact, is 2 feet back, structurally would probably run me another $5,000. My builder submitted a change order, which I have not signed, because I, in addition to, you know, the almost $10,000 over budget I already am, it would, you know, be an additional $5,000 on top of that, and at the end of the day, doesn't necessarily guarantee that it would be that much more structurally sound because of how the property sits. Thank you.
Thank you. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Okay. Discussions, Commissioner? Okay. I have a question. So in 2016, this plan was presented, and it was presented and administratively permitted...
It was approved by the commission in 2016.
With this front?
So it was approved with conditions, I had that staff recommendation, the standard conditions, material approval, siding exposure. There was, well, that's not it. There were 6 conditions, and number 4 was that the front dormer shall be set back 2 feet from the front wall below. The day after the commission meeting, I, the applicant, was unable to attend the meeting, but I emailed the applicant, told her it was approved with those conditions of the staff recommendation, and said, some of the conditions will require minor changes or notes added to the drawings. I think we can do that ourselves. Again, that's because I know there were stock plans, and it's not like there was an architect on retainer. Would you want to come into the office and we can make those changes together? And then, I don't have notes of a meeting, but I have a permit, so I assume that the applicant did come into the office. We, I mean, we do this frequently with applicants. We had notes to drawings or, you know, draw corner boards on, something like that. And this drawing, these drawings are what were in the permit. The first ones I showed were the, what were proposed. This is what was attached to the permit in 2016, showing just sort of a, instead of pushing the dormer back, we pulled the front wall forward, but in terms of the drawing, it's effectively the same.
But it did have the 2-foot setback?
It did.
Okay. And this was presented during your conversation, discussion with the applicant, correct?
Yeah, this was emailed to the applicant 2016. In September of this year, she asked for the permit. She said, you know, she was getting a project going again within the staff. We debated whether or not it had to come back to the commission, or if we could just reissue the staff permit. I acknowledge I inadvertently sent out the permit with the original plans, not those that were approved by the commission, but that's an error on my part. As staff, I don't have the authority to approve something different than what the commission had approved. So I let the applicant know that, hey, that permit had the wrong drawings, here's the one with the proper drawings. And that's when she said, well, while we're at it, I'd like to ask for those original drawings. So that's where we are.
Understood.
Sean, this question is a little bit technical, but it's curious that the front of the house sits on the front wall, the back of the house sits 2 feet off, the dormer on the back of the house sits 2 feet off, and structurally it just seems like those are the similar conditions that you would have in construction. If the back dormer sat at the back of the house, that is a different condition than the front and wouldn't necessarily be problematic, or might not have a condition of approval if that were the case? In other words, to my recollection, rear dormers can be flush with the rear of the house typically.
That's correct.
Can I add something?
Sure.
We have it on, 5 feet to back the house, and solid.
Can you come up to the, thank you.
We have added...
Can you turn on your, no, you just need to turn that on, please. We're in public records, so.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do you want me to say my name again, or just, okay. We added on additional concrete footer to the rear of the house, again, with the understanding that my biggest concern, having to, you know, invest over $8,000 just to prepare the house structurally, I didn't want to run into a similar situation as I had in the past where my house is shifting. So we added on an additional 4 feet deep and 4 feet back of concrete to support that dormer, even though it would also be recessed 2 feet, but again, it was, oh, excuse me, 5, almost 5 feet, 4 and 1/2 feet width-wise, to support the LVL and the dormer in the back as well. And again, this relates, is my exact same concern with the front of the house. I want it to be residing on concrete, not on the crawl space.
So this hasn't been constructed yet? The rear dormer?
The rear dormer has not. We had gotten to the point in 2016 where we had poured the foundation and that footer per spec, per engineering and codes, and that was actually passed approval for framing, and that's where, when we started to begin the framing process, we realized we had some additional concerns, and that related to the structural integrity and the shifting that had occurred over time. So that's when we kind of put the brakes on everything, and I had to, again, invest considerable amounts of money to get the house readied. So, you know, when I did resubmit, one of the, and, you know, running into the concerns that, you know, again, not only the architects, but the framers had, was that, hey, we really don't want to set this back, otherwise we're going to have to...
Okay. Commissioner, do you have... Commissioner, do you have other question on that?
I do. I just, that argument seems a little specious to me in that the relationship, if you push the back dormer to the back, would they give you a $5,000 credit, even if you kept the front one at the front? I'm struggling to understand how, in fact, one's not related to the other, or the, you know, the construction condition would be similar, and if you, materials to transfer that load, any of that, I don't know that that's, we need to get into all those details, but that, that seems that we'd be asking for, give some leeway in the back to get what is typical in the front. And I don't know if there's photographs circulating on front dormers that are flush, but that was, that was where my question was, what it was related to.
Okay, we may have other questions, so just, thank you. Okay, any other comments?
So, Sean, this may be a question for you. So I'm looking at page 10 of the staff report, and it, I'm looking at the photo, figure seven. So is one of the issues, so you, we want the front, I mean, you know, recommended according to design guidelines, the front dormer should start at the change from the roof line to the, you know, generally, or that, and so that doesn't fall, to me, that doesn't, if that is where they are putting it, that doesn't fall, I mean, again, it's kind of an angle, but that's not at that front wall. I mean, I'm guessing that's the issue, they want to build it over part of the roof, but that's not the angle that I'm seeing on the drawings. I'm probably not making sense. So like the picture, the figure seven is, the front of the house looks different than the drawings.
The section shows.
Yeah, the section cut shows the angle changing at the front wall, but the photo, the building, it changes behind the front wall. So I'm just confused, because that, when you were going through, oh shit, shoot, sorry. That's, is that, does that make sense to anybody else? Does anybody see what I'm seeing? Okay.
It's definitely the section of.
Yeah, on the section of the drawing, the change from the roof to the, the change from the deck to the roof is at the front wall, but in the section, in the photo 1707 of the house, it's behind the front wall.
Yes.
Right? Is that, is that an issue that you've thought about?
Essentially, they're, they've begun construction, the, kind of in keeping with the historic examples where the, where the roof, and adding the dormer to sit forward of that would not, would be atypical.
But I'm saying, so if, how is it constructed now in this photo we're looking at? If they built it at that line, which seems to be at least, I don't know how many feet, but X space beyond, beyond the front wall, I mean, wouldn't that be the spot that?
You mean where the shed comes to the?
Yeah, where the shed comes to, I mean, I just don't, I don't understand why the two are different, if that's like really what we're looking at. Because that's not what's on this drawing.
Exactly, and that's why we stopped construction at that point, because we realized the concern we would have. Not just structurally, from an integrity standpoint, but having to rage, raise the ridge line even higher than we initially had requested in the 2016 permit that was issued, because it would not accommodate an eight foot, that is per codes clearance in that room upstairs. It wouldn't, it just wouldn't. It was gonna be like maybe five feet high.
So there's several discrepancies between what's built and the drawings. In, in the photograph we see now, with the front of the face of the dormer, are you saying it would be proud of, of where that transition happens, or would it align with where that transition happens? Where's the dormer going?
I would recommend that it be where the break in the roof is.
And I think that would be, to me, that would be acceptable. Right now, it's unclear where it's going, because nothing matches, like what's built and what's drawn do not match.
Building it stacked over the front wall would put it proud of that line, which is not typical of the form. And, you know, we don't necessarily say that, we don't say that somebody has to build a craftsman, but if they propose a craftsman, we kind of, you know, we're an architectural review board, or you are, so we, we review that the details be appropriate for the form that's, that's, that's proposed. I don't understand why the, the roof would need to get taller. I'm not, my recommendation is just that the front wall be set back, not that the, the roof or the height change any. Maybe that's something else in the, the drawings that.
If I could address both of those. So if you go back to the current state, the reason I had the contractor stop when he did, and you'll notice they didn't even finish the roofing part because of the fact that they realized, and they had done it so that it would accommodate that setback, but then they realized that as you're looking at it right now, that ridge line would have to go up another eight feet, because as it was, it was not even going to be, it wouldn't even accommodate the windows, which were already approved by code. It was only about, would be about five feet tall on the inside. In addition to that, they brought up the additional concerns of the structural integrity. So at this point, what I would like to do, and what I've been discussing with my contractor, is them having to pretty much take down what they've done for that top portion of the roof, so it sits, sits back in line with the front wall, and it would revert back to the original plan as it was.
This is all clear as mud to me. I would appreciate if the applicant would, I don't even know if this is possible, withdraw and come back to us with plans of what you're actually going to do.
Okay, so you're asking me to wait an additional 30 days?
I, we're confused of what's, what's currently built versus what you want versus what you've proposed, and it would, I think it would help, if somebody can else chime in, if we could look at exactly what it is you want to do.
Well, that's in the original drawing that you've seen.
So that was an original, that was a drawing in 2016?
Correct.
So we would like to see one that's now 2019.
It's the exact same drawing.
I guess I'm still confused, what are you gonna do about?
What I'm.
Where, where the, where the break in the roof happens is not, currently is not what's on the plan that you want. So are you gonna rebuild, you're gonna move the wall back?
Yes, yes. That is what I'm asking the variance for, is to be able to have it per the original plan, because of all the concerns, as we started to begin the construction process, we realized there was just a litany of concerns and not sticking with the original plan.
I, I think we're also questioning, because it looks to us that that eight foot ceiling, even if you push it back, is still gonna be eight foot. Right? Architects?
The bridge, you're talking about the ridge line of the roof?
Let's see. It's one, it's one on, it's one on the, here, up here. Oh, dear.
To one of the sections?
Yeah. Stop. See, if you're, if you, the top, the top, the top figure, if you moved it back two foot, it's not gonna, it's not gonna shorten your eight foot ceiling.
It just leaves two feet on the front.
It leaves two feet in the front, and you could shift back on the, I think from what Commissioner Mosley was saying, is you've got two foot on the backside, could you move it to the backside?
And when we pushed it back, we were staking it out on the roof. It brought the, the line of the dormer above the existing ridge.
I don't think we understand that. I think that's, I think we're unclear about that.
Because if you move it back, you're also going up and back, you're not just going straight back. Because you, otherwise you're gonna be cutting into this first floor, I mean.
Are you maintaining the original, the ridge that's on the house as it's constructed today, will that be moved, or is it taller, right?
It was planned to be taller, per the original design, however, because of the grade of the house that it's sitting on, it would actually have to go up approximately six feet higher than we initially had requested in the initial permit.
Will it be built to what's drawn in the 2016 drawings? Or six feet taller than that?
So if you look at this drawing, it's exactly like that drawing from a height perspective, but on the other side of the house where there's the hill, it actually needs to increase to accommodate, if that makes, well, the entire house is on a grade, like a 30% grade, so it's, I don't know what point you're measuring, if you're measuring from the front of the house, it's exactly the same, for that answer to your question. If you're measuring from the mid, the midpoint, it's actually about six, seven feet higher.
In the drawing, or as it exists today?
Not as it exists today. The house today is only about, I think we calculated between 16, 17, Sean, I don't know if you have that in your notes, but we calculated somewhere around 17 feet high.
At the cross cable, yeah. And it just looked, I was just confirming that, because it looks certainly in the photographs versus the drawings that it's inadequate to accommodate the width and the size of the house. I'm just making sure that I understand and was seeing that clearly.
Okay, we're gonna continue discussion, thank you. Any more good discussions, commissioners?
I do have a question for the applicant, related to the windows. Do you plan to maintain the existing windows on the house, or will those all be replaced?
I did plan on maintaining all but two, and then of course, the windows, the existing windows in the rear of the house, which that rear wall's getting back, you know, moved out, those of course are gonna get replaced as well. But all the other windows are the same, keeping the same windows.
So they'll, they'll remain in the same place, and then other windows will be relocated? Will the new, is it the intent that the new windows will match the construction of the old windows, or the existing windows?
Yes, we are doing them as close as possible to the same look and aesthetic. We had, because the windows that we had selected Wincor were not on the historic guideline list, I had my builders bring the windows down to historic, and they were subsequently approved for this.
Okay.
Are you ready to vote? Okay, can someone make the motion, please?
Mr., I don't care to let you know, I am abstaining from this since I missed the original.
Okay, thank you.
I think that the staff recommendation and approval in 2016 was the right decision, and I don't see anything here that convinces me that it needs to be altered. So on 1404 Lillian Street, I move that we approve with staff recommendations.
There's a motion? There's a second? All in favor? Okay. Any opposed? None opposed, the motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, applicant. Continue to work with the staff. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is an application for an outbuilding that was constructed before obtaining either a preservation permit or a building permit. The project includes a setback determination to reduce the street side setback from 10 feet to five feet. The house is located at 1628 Shelby Avenue, and was constructed circa 1904. It does contribute to the historic character of the Lockland Springs East End neighborhood. There were several additions added to the house in the 1980s, which was before this property was included in the overlay, which was part of the 2014 expansion. As constructed, the carport does not meet the design guidelines for the street side setback, separation from the principal structure and roof shape. The carport is located approximately five feet from the left side property line, as well as five feet from the rear of the house, not including the eve overhangs. Staff does not recommend approval of the side setback determination, since there is room in this case to shift the outbuilding closer to the right side property line, and as a result, meet both side setbacks. The carport as constructed also does not meet the 20 feet separation from the principal structure. The purpose of that separation requirement is to provide for open space and also to prevent the appearance of an attached garage. Since this site is mostly flat and is a fairly typical lot depth, an attached garage would not meet the design guidelines at this location. So in this case, the proximity of that carport to the primary structure does, staff finds create the appearance of an attached garage. So also, while the, the previous rear additions were constructed prior to the overlay, together they more than doubled the footprint of the historic house, and included both an attached garage and carport at various times before those were enclosed and converted to living space. If you, if you drive by, you'll notice two curb cuts along South 17th Street. Those were likely to service those, that carport and garage from the 80s. The carport has a roof pitch of 312. The design guidelines states that the roof slope should typically be at least 412, so as constructed, it would not meet that design guideline, so. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of this application and setback determination finding the project does not meet section 2B2 for scale, 2BAA for roof shape, and 2B8B for setbacks of the Lockland Springs East End neighborhood conservation overlay. Also, you were forwarded some public comment prior to this meeting, and also some was received shortly before the meeting, so I included that on, on your table. All right, thank you. Questions?
As chair, I just wanted to acknowledge one of the public comments about spirit of the neighborhood and business, businesses. And I think we just have to remind ourselves and remind applicants too, that these overlays were diligently created and drafted by the neighborhood associations, so they weren't drafted by our staff or commission, so that, those recommendations are seriously considered, and we just need to remind ourselves that the neighborhoods did establish these overlays for a reason, and we, that is our purview as a commission. So, thank you. Applicant?
My name's Ricky Corver, I live at 1628 Shelby Street. If you noticed, I have pulled a few permits over the years. I called Metro Codes. I talked to a lady whoever answered the phone, asked for codes, to speak to a codes administration person. She says she could help me. I explained to her I would like to build a carport and pour concrete for drive, you know, for the driveway part. She told me to call Public Works, that they didn't have anything to do with the carport. So I called them. They, they come out, inspected where the driveway come into the yard, they had me move it over to their specifications, so we done that. So we built the carport, it's close enough, simple enough to where it would look, it would look good enough with a house. And I have understood that if it's mobile, that's a different kind of, that's a different story altogether. The whole carport is put together with screws, and it can be, the post can be moved and cut off even the ground to where it don't have a foundation, if necessary, and I leave that up to y'all. You know, I would, you know, I just leave that up to y'all. I have CLPD, I have a harder time breathing, so you have to bear with me for a second. In addition to that, the day we started on the carport, a codes man pulled up in the alley, was watching us for like 10, 15 minutes. I have cameras all over the house, and I've got all this on cameras. Why didn't he tell us to stop at that point? Because a government official cannot waste money or, or have, or have, make a resident spend money. where he shouldn't spend money if he causes it. So if I'm looking at it, if I have to do anything drastic, he caused me to have to do it because he didn't, if he was sitting there 10, 15 minutes, he had time to tell us to get a permit. He was like from me to you, or maybe 10 foot further. So he waited three weeks. We built this during the week, not on the weekends. And we seen him two or three times during that time. He could have stopped us at any point. And one time he pulled around the front of Shelby Street and I had my son look. He was setting two houses down. So we thought that he was doing something to another house. So that, that in regards, that kind of made me think it was okay. So other than that, I don't know. We can put up one of metal carports, which would be ugly compared to what we've got now. And I guess that's all I got to say. I don't know anything else to say. You know, we went to codes, you got it straightened out. And we couldn't ever get anybody to call us back. We'd left like 10 messages to, for the lady in her historical society and for codes administration. And I'm sure they've got all that documented. Nobody would call us back or come out and give us any idea of what we needed to do to solve the problem or we wouldn't have to come here. So that's where we're at now. I appreciate talking to y'all. Thank you.
Mr. Carver, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So did you go to codes for a permit?
After we built it.
Okay.
And
And did you? I have a second fold question.
Okay.
Did you also know that your area was under an overlay?
No, ma'am. I thought I lived in Lockland Springs, not Edgefield. I've got a piece of paper from codes administration. Everybody approved it, but the historic, all the setbacks was approved.
But you got the permit after you built?
No, ma'am. They wouldn't issue us one. All the codes people passed it, the, all the
I thought I heard you say that. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. I've got the paper here where all the codes people passed the, all the setbacks for the carport. They approved it. And the last one turned it down, which was, I guess, the historical society. Would you like that piece of paper to look at it, where everybody passed it?
Metro strike.
So they were saying want to go, that it wasn't within the boundaries, which codes says it is.
I can help with that.
Okay.
The building permit hasn't been issued.
The building permit, not preservation permit?
Neither permit has been issued.
Okay.
Would you like the piece of paper from codes administration?
You can hand that over to Ms. Robin Ziegler there.
Different departments look at it, but that doesn't mean that the permit's been issued.
Okay. Do you have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. We may have some other questions for you. Open public hearing. Yes, please use, say your name and address, please. Can you turn on your mic there?
Where?
It's a red button, the button. There you go, thank you.
My name is Edwina Wilmore. I live next door at 1626 Shelby Avenue. And I've been there since 2009 and the Carvers have lived in their house since 1982. I'm here because I think you should approve this permit. The carport is planned and built falls well within the spirit of the overlay when it was extended, even though it doesn't go exactly to the letter. In 2014, the nearby community sought legal protection because it felt the threat of tall and skinny umbilical duplexes. And that was the legislative brush stroke, was the expansion of the NCO to this other section of the neighborhood. And in this case, this is just a carport. It's not a DADU, it's not a garage, it can't be converted into such. And honestly, that was the reason. If you recall, 2013, this process started up. And when it passed in 2014, the neighborhood meetings that we all had, some people went to, it was basically to prevent tall and skinny duplexes getting built in empty lots, in lots of the 50s and lots from the teens. Not to stop carports for long-term residents. If you actually look at the property records for the house, in 1913, the house was bought by Mr. William Gwynn. And then in 1982, the house was bought by Ricky. That's 116 years and two owners. I really don't care how much money it would cost. If it costs a single cent, you should be not putting that money, taking that money out of this family's pocket. They're longtime residents of the neighborhood, well before it was renamed Shelby Hills on our side of the street. You need to approve this and not have them tear down what they've already done. Otherwise, the message is really quite clear that this commission and government in general here really cares a lot less about longtime residents than it actually does about the property that they own. As far as the setbacks concerned, there's nearby context across the street and both the church and the silliness at 1627, where there's a zero setback and a two-foot setback. So in the context of the nearest buildings on South 17th Street, and this is the last building on South 17th Street, there is no, there's plenty of context.
Time. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're closing public hearing. Thank you. Robin, did you have something to, anything further on this project?
What's submitted is showing the review process. It's not a permit. It is not a building permit, but I'm happy to pass it around if you'd like to see it.
While I understand that there wasn't a building permit nor a preservation permit as a part of that building permit, I don't know, y'all hate me when I say this, but I just, I don't mind the carport. I mean, it's, yes, it's a structure. You know, not that it's see-through, but it's more open space than an actual structure. So I don't, I just, I don't know. I'll hear y'all's opinions, but I don't know, it just doesn't really bother me.
Not, sorry, Brian, I feel like I'm really loud, okay? This isn't the first time we've recently seen things were built without a permit and we've consistently upheld our design guidelines since I've been on the commission. I feel like, as Chairman Bell said, the design guidelines were created through a democratic neighborhood process and it's our charge to uphold them. I feel for Mr. Carver. I'm sorry we've gotten to this situation, but something substantial as this does require a building permit, which requires a preservation permit first. So, I don't know. That's all I can say right now.
Just one more question to staff. I just want to make sure I understood. So the roof, the roof shape and scale, that was, besides the setbacks, that's what the issues were. Just, I just want to get clear, just make sure that kind of based off what Caitlin said, that, you know, it is similar to, you know, it's just a clear, it's pretty much, even with the screws, it's kind of a temporary, I mean, I don't know. That's probably not the right words to say. So let me just get you to restate that. The issue was that part of it.
Right, so the footprint, the eve height, the ridge height are fine. It did not meet the design guidelines for the roof shape, the side setback, as well as the separation between the house and the outbuilding. But it met the other design guidelines.
Okay, thanks.
To that end, and certainly the lack of a permit, not to be rewarded, but I'm looking at this and thinking about previous cases and if, setting aside for a moment that project was constructed, as it shouldn't have been, but without a permit, were this brought to us today, what would be the arguments surrounding this application? It's obvious that it's not 20 feet separated from the house. It's 10 feet from the alley, nine plus or minus. And that we've permitted garages in Public Works is not keen on garages that get much closer than that merely to be able to see cars backing in and out of the alley. So meets the side setback on both sides. Again, the roof, roof shape, I'll take that into account. I'm curious how different this would look if it were presented as a case to us today. And I don't want to, and normally wouldn't be in the business of rewarding an applicant by allowing something that, you know, that didn't get a permit and feeling empathy for them and just letting it slide. We've, on many occasions, not done that. But I would ask other commissioners, what would this look like? And what would we, are we just sending somebody around the horn for no good reason? The staff is doing their job and we need to do ours as well. But I'm curious if it would look a lot different than this application, taking into account, if this were enclosed, it would be a very different project. And it's not enclosed. And so I think a greater roof pitch makes it more obtrusive and more noticeable. It's a very utilitarian building. Before we make a final determination, I would just throw those arguments out there for consideration.
I throw something else out too. So if this outbuilding became enclosed, as you said, could there be a possibility to have done that in the future without us knowing about it? That's just, again, putting it out there.
Illegally being closed, sure. I mean, there's lots of people that do lots of things that aren't permitted or that aren't legal. It's not for us to determine, I don't think. If the application is for a carport that's unenclosed and the applicant has retroactively sought a permit for just that, not for anything more or less, that it's presented and would be accepted on the factual basis of its application.
And regarding also the setback, was that, but that's still clear based off of how they ended up constructing the driveway? The point I'm making, if, because it's not much of a structure, if it was, can it still be moved? Maybe I should say it that way. Probably not to the full amount of the setback though. Yeah, I'm thinking while I'm talking, which is always dangerous.
Well, when we were reviewing this, looking at the site plan, there appears to be space within the right side yard where it could be shifted in order to meet both the five-foot setback on the interior property line and the 10-foot along the street. So that was just how that assessment came about.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'll just add to what's been said. I mean, to me, I could see us having leniency on this setback and the roof pitch. It's the amount of, amount of built space it's taking up is where I have an issue, except because it's open, I have less of an issue with it than I would if it were an enclosed structure. So I'm a little torn on it, honestly.
I just want to say that I agree with what's been stated with respect to this not being overly obtrusive, if you will, and that it's not problematic, in my opinion. I like that it is open. And I also agree that if the roof was higher, it would be more obvious and less in line with the guideline. So I find it to be suitable as it is.
Are we ready to make a motion? Or we still need discussion?
I'll make a motion regarding 1628 Shelby Avenue. I move to approve the project as built.
Okay, there's a motion? There's a second? I'm going to have a raise of hands. All in favor for this motion, please raise your hand. All opposed to this motion? There is one. Okay, so the motion does pass. Thank you. Robin, let me, let me just retract just for a second. Did we give you enough information of why we disapproved? We did, okay. You're, the recommendation. Okay, thank you.
This is the application that the applicant wrote to request a deferral. So here we are at that point in the agenda. And for you to consider whether or not to defer it per their request. I just would point out, and I think that you saw, that there were two letters from neighbors submitted, items of public comment. And I was going to see if there is anybody else from the audience for or against this case, I guess.
So are we going to, legal, chime in? But if, because if we're going to hear it, is
I think you would want to make the decision first, what standard you want to have for a deferral for a non-permit holder.
Okay.
I mean, after reading this, I don't, I don't see the need to give a deferral. They've built something that wasn't permitted. I don't know what a deferral would do. I think it's
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, so that's just my opinion. It's up for discussion, but I don't know what it
So you're motioning, there's a motion to hear it. Is there a second to hear it as well? There's a second? Unless you've got a question?
There's a motion.
Motion, let's just go ahead and motion.
Further discussion, please.
Yeah, all right, all in favor to
Need discussion before, if we have a motion to hear it, then there ain't no more discussion.
I apologize. Who made the motion to discuss? I thought you were asking to discuss, okay. So yes, now you can discuss the motion before you
The motion.
Vote on it.
Okay, all right. Let's discuss the motion. This is our first call around.
I may veer into discussions of the merits of the deferral, which I think is related to the motion. Because, as I think we heard, and I'll remind commissioners, we're not bound to a timeframe in a show cause. And legal, jump in if I misspeak. On a show cause opportunity, or opportunity, show cause.
This is not a show cause, I'm reminded.
A show cause is when there is work done differently than permitted and it's their obligation to show you why they didn't follow their permit. This was work done without a permit.
So this is a violation?
Yes.
And so they're, in a violation, giving additional quarter of any deferral or one deferral or some?
I think that's the question. For a non-show cause situation, for a violation, do you want, what standard do you all want to have for a deferral? Do you want an applicant to show cause for a deferral? Or do you want to, another option would be just to automatically grant as a matter of right a first request for a deferral for a violation? You all can have that debate without touching the merits of the action about whether you want to allow applicants, generally speaking, who are non-permit holders with violations, to obtain, what standard should they have for obtaining a deferral?
In a show cause deferral, is it written in the guidelines that there is any opportunity for a deferral?
My understanding, since, my understanding is it's more of a practice that you all have for showing cause for people who have, who are permit holders. And so that's what we're looking for, is to establish a practice, whatever it may be. It may be that you want the same standard, it may be that you want a different standard, it's up to you.
If we were to hear this case and the motion were approved and it were, a determination were made, that would mean that the applicant would need to come back with new information to, well, they don't have an application, so they could sign up next month and make an application. That sounds like a true statement.
Yes, they can make an application.
And we would hear the merits of that at that time, if there were any merits.
You'd still be in the same position that there is an active violation, whether or not they make an application.
Agreed. And so in this case, I think the application, or certainly the timeframe, there's a 60-day timeframe that's put on it, that would start ticking from when we hear it now. Even if they made another application, it would still, the 60 days that we start today would still be ticking, and they would need to provide whatever remedy in that timeframe.
Are you, I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'm not sure either.
Like, sorry.
Well, I'll tell you one, one quick question, not to, you keep thinking of that, but what grounds were they asking for a deferral?
I don't know. They didn't provide any.
And are they, are they here today?
Oh, that's not true. I'm sorry. They did. They said that they, are they, is the applicant here today? No, sick child.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Sick child was the reason.
Sick child.
So my previous point is that in the recommendation summary, if we approve that, they would have 60 days to remove it and put it back to its original condition. And so if we decide that, 60 days starts today. If they come back, which they have the right to, in 30 days and make an application, that 60 days wouldn't stop. I guess we could stop it. I don't know. I think counsel would need to weigh in on that. But we need to make sure that what we're, we understand what we're doing and that if we want to unwind that, how difficult it might be before we, I'm not for somebody to say, "No, yeah, I can't make it, sorry." But at the same time, I don't know that, will we be harmed? Will the community be harmed significantly if they show up 30 days from now and we have the same discussion?
So if I could weigh in here, I think that the 60 days is really just the determinant, that time is really about appealing to court for it. If, if today you were to decide to have a citation and then they came back in 30 days, you could always change, you could change your mind as to the 60 days. You could have, make a different decision that would, that would start the clock again on a 60-day appeal of that decision.
So I just want to bring up, I guess the, I guess I like for applicants to always have their opportunity to be able to speak. Now, if they had just not showed up, I think I'd be more in favor of just, you know, ruling on the case as it is. But since they asked for a deferral and they, you know, we don't know if sick child, but I'd assume they had a sick child. I don't see the problem of, you know, just specifically saying, we defer at one meeting and then after that one meeting, if they hadn't, they don't show up again, a sick child again, then maybe we will rule differently. But, you know, I'd like for the applicants to have an opportunity to be able to, you know, to present their case, whether we may disagree with it, you know, that it seems pretty apparent, but, you know, I feel like this is their opportunity to speak. And if they hadn't said anything, it'd be a different story, it'd be total negligence. But the fact that they did call in, it seems like they would like to be able to present their point. So I would be in favor of granting the deferral.
Also, in, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Notification by an applicant, I think it's important as well. If it's verbal, that could have been said, but I would recommend that it be written, if it's an email, that to say, you know, here's my reasoning, and not just to say that. I mean, we don't discount that there's, could be serious, but having written, especially on this, a sense of violation with no permit. So if that's within...
It was by email, the notification today.
Okay.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Debs, just about giving the, giving the applicant, or not applicant, but...
Do you respond if we close the door? I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm getting old, I can't, barely hear.
Unfortunately, I think it's people coming and going from another meeting and...
That's what I wondered.
Can't close the door.
But I agree with giving the applicant the benefit of the doubt and giving them an opportunity to speak and granting one deferral for a violation seems appropriate to me.
Counsel, if we were to grant a deferral and the applicant didn't show again, could we retroactively in a motion have the 60 days start from today?
I don't think you can do that, because you'll be making the decision 30 days from now.
I also, I'm also in agreement with Brian on this.
Just, I think I put a motion, just, y'all vote me down and then we'll do another one.
And I concur also with Commissioner.
Can she withdraw her motion, or?
Okay, so the question is whether, what happens with the current motion? You can always withdraw your motion, but if you can, you can insist that your motion be heard.
Yep.
And some that has been received since was emailed to you before the meeting, and then we received a letter from the council member, which is on your table. So this is an application to construct a two-story infill on this vacant lot at the northwest corner of North 16th Street and Woodland Street. The lot's one of the narrower lots on the block at about 47 and a half feet wide. The project also includes a setback determination to reduce that side street setback from 20 feet to 10 feet. In this case, it's a 20-foot setback because North 16th is a collector's street. The proposed infill has a two-story form. Staff finds that a two-story form does not meet the immediate historic context. While there are examples of two-story houses on the 14 and 1600 blocks of Woodland Street, the 1500 block where the site's located has a strong historic context of one- and one-and-a-half-story structures. So here's a streetscape that was provided by the applicant. In the applicant's submission, a case at 1705 Woodland Street is cited as a reason for why a two-story infill could be appropriate here. That project was for an infill and was for an approval of a two-story infill that the commission approved in 2013. It looked to historic homes on nearby blocks of Forest Avenue and Holly Street for context. Since that time, the commission has recognized the concerns of neighborhoods about the ever-increasing scale of projects and directed staff to look at a more immediate historic context. So that's why for this project, staff looked solely to the 1500 block of Woodland Street and finding that there was a strong historic context is why we have recommended a one- or one-and-a-half-story infill project here. So in addition, the lot is on the narrower end for this block, so therefore amassing larger than neighboring buildings on wider lots would not create a cohesive look for new development here and wouldn't meet sections 2B1 and 2B2 of the design guidelines for height and scale. So here are photos. The top left is the, the structure immediately across 16th. And then the photo to the right is the house immediately next door to the left, and the bottom photo is across the street that shows some of the context. The Urban Cowboy at 1603 Woodland Street, while very large, is predominantly one and one-and-a-half stories with primarily single-story eaves. As proposed, the infill would match the maximum height of that structure. So here are some more context photos on the 1500 block of Woodland. The top is looking down the street to the left of the site, and the bottom is further down at 1511 Woodland Street, and some historic homes across the street from the site. The infill is oriented to Woodland Street and meets all setbacks except the right-side setback along 16th. The applicant has requested to reduce the side setback here from 20 feet to 10. And staff finds that this could be appropriate. At this location, as a 10-foot setback would be consistent if, if the form of the infill were appropriate for the context. However, since the overall amassing and two-story form are not appropriate for the historic context, staff cannot recommend approval of the setback determination for the project as proposed. So the infill, here's the front of the infill. It includes brick-to-grade with the foundation line indicated by a soldier course. The commission has typically required a change in material at the foundation line in order to meet section 2B2 of the guidelines. The infill also includes a partial width front porch that is just shy of the, of the recommended six-foot minimum depth. The applicant has indicated that they're willing to work with staff to meet these guidelines. So here's the right-side elevation and the left-side elevation, which includes several small square windows that don't meet the historic proportion of windows, which are typically twice as tall as they are wide. Since this is not the side facing North 16th Street, it may be appropriate to have some of the windows near the rear be this small square proportion. But staff would recommend that the one closest to the front on the upper level have, have that historic proportion. And the applicant's willing to work with staff on that as well. So here's the rear elevation and some more plans included by the applicant that show the infill in context. So in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the project, finding that the proposed infill does not meet section 2B1 for height, 2B2 for scale, 2B3 for setback and rhythm of spacing, 2B6 for orientation, that's the porch depth, and 2B7 for proportion and rhythm of openings of the Lachlan Springs East End neighborhood conservation zoning overlay design guidelines. So, and they are willing to work with staff on everything, but they do want to ask for the two-story form. So they are here.
Did they, a question for you. Did the applicant work with you during the process, or was it after they submitted, then they brought up the...
Right. Yeah, we've, the owners contacted us maybe about a year or more ago, and we've had this conversation since then about staff finding that two-story, we wouldn't be able to support that here, but knowing from early on that they wanted to ask for that.
Okay. And, you know, the, the base part was kind of the one that raised a red flag with me, because I knew that'd be one of the comments you guys would have made, a change in material. So that's why I was curious. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. All right. Anyone else? Okay, applicant?
Hi, I'm Marcia Truitt. My husband and I own 1521 Woodland Street. He would be here, but he's with our kids. We have a couple sheets we'd like to pass out, if that's okay, real quick.
My name is David Baird, architect at 5411 Centennial Boulevard.
All right, real quick, I'm going to keep going. Thank you so much, all of you, to staff and commission for your time and service. We realize that you do a lot of work to keep our historic neighborhoods beautiful, and we really appreciate that. Sorry for my shaky voice. Thank you for your consideration of this proposal. But real quick, I just want to tell you a little bit about our family before I jump in with some details. Kate and I have lived in East Nashville for almost 12 years. It's home to our family and we love it dearly. The home before you is the product of hours and hours of careful thought, because we spend a lot of time at home. Kate's worked from home for six years. I work part-time from home. We've even homeschooled our kids during three years, something we might do again. We realize this is an amazing opportunity, getting to build and design a home, and therefore we want to be really intentional about every decision. I could talk for hours about the placement of the rooms, the flow, the windows, how there's no wasted space, but that's not why we're here. We've also been intentional about thinking about a home that contributes to our beautiful neighborhood. I've emailed our immediate neighbor who's been out of town for business, and I've spoken in person with our other three immediate neighbors. We have their support for our two-story proposal. We've also spoken with other neighbors close by, and nine have emailed you with their support. We ask you to consider this modest, contemporary take on a classic two-story home for these following reasons. Our corner lot has some unique characteristics that make it different than other East Nashville lots. On page D1 and D1.1, you'll see a row of beautiful magnolia trees lining the side of our property. Our goal is to preserve as many as we can. Tree experts have told us that we'll need to remove the trees right beside our home's foundation, since they will be damaged, the roots will be damaged, and the trimming, sorry, they wouldn't survive the damage. Our home's small footprint allows us to preserve more trees. Our footprint is less than 1,500 square feet, and that includes the front and back porch. On page D3, you'll see how the size of our footprint compares to the structures around it. If we built a one-and-a-half-story, our footprint would need to be larger, since we would need to relocate rooms from upstairs to the main floor. Building a larger footprint back further into the yard would require cutting down at least one, maybe two more trees. We want to save as many as we can. I'd like to add that urban forestry has guidelines for how to preserve trees during construction, which means it can be done, and we're going to do it. On page EXO, you'll find a map of Lachlan Springs. As we dreamed about home designs, we surveyed our neighborhood. We have identified at least 42 historic two-story homes sprinkled throughout our neighborhood. Most of them are next to a one-and-a-half-story home. I think this diversity in form makes East Nashville beautiful, and it would appear that the architects and residents 100 years ago agreed, since that's where they built them. This is the overall context of our historic neighborhood. But zooming in on our immediate context, you'll find a beautiful contributing two-story home on our block, which was where we got the idea. 1419 Woodland Street, found on page EX2, is a few houses down from us on the same block. Even though the numbers change from the 1400s to the 1500s, it's one continuous block. The next seven pages, you'll see more two historic homes, both historic and new construction, all in our immediate context. We respectfully ask that 1419 Woodland Street be included in our immediate context, which informs your decision on what we are allowed to build. One last thing that makes our lot unique is that we're the only residential lot on this corner. The other three corners are commercial buildings, as shown in D2. We ask that you also consider the unique nature, height, and massing of these commercial structures when making your decision on what form and massing we are allowed to build. David's going to speak.
If you could go to page D4, that shows the... If you could go to page D4, that shows the section along Woodland Street. And where the Urban Cowboy is and where this lot is, that used to be called the Top of the Woodlands. And you'll see that the street slopes down from the top of 16th and Woodland to the left. And if you notice some of the dimensions that we have on the existing houses there, all the houses step up from the bottom of the street up to the top of the street, and this house steps up as well, about the same amount. And we were trying to keep the absolute height the same as the Urban Cowboy, and we think we've gone out and surveyed these houses, so we know that this is pretty accurate. If you look on drawing D5 and D7, those are views showing the context of the house on the top of Woodland, looking down, and then from the bottom of Woodland, looking up. And again, we're, just like to point out that the stair step of the houses seems pretty On the next sheet is the architectural design, the elevations. And as we indicated before, we would like to work with staff on their recommendations for that. The street, this lot is unique in that it has the beautiful trees, and also the width of it is not too much narrower than the typical 50-foot lots adjacent to it. And the width of the house is within the width that staff did recommend when they first reviewed this with Marcia a couple of years ago. Last month, at 922 Russell Street, there was a two, there are two-story houses that were approved, and those were each on 45-foot lots. It was originally a 90-foot lot, and it got divided. So those infill houses will appear similar to this. So we don't think that our 32-foot wide house is going to appear too wide or too narrow on this lot. The last thing that I'd like to say is that we understand that this is a very unique context with three commercial buildings on intersections like this, and then this lot is very unique, and we kind of feel that this corner needs to anchor the other corner of this intersection. I'll turn it over to Marcia for closing comments.
So in conclusion, we're asking you to consider the contributing two-story home on our block, the small footprint and compact design of our two-story home, the unique nature of our lot, that we share the corner with three commercial buildings and that their existing trees we're trying to preserve. And lastly, please consider the support we have from our neighbors nearby. Thank you for your time and your consideration of our request.
Thank you. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Okay.
While I appreciate all the work and the presentation that you, applicant, and architect have done, I just, I haven't changed my opinion from, I agree with staff recommendation, Councilman Withers, the Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Association, that this, I just, I agree with everyone, the size, the massing, the form. I mean, if, looking at D7 that applicant provided, even though, if the argument is that it's on a block where the other three are commercial, which is true, the other three commercial buildings read smaller than this building, the forms read smaller. So it's not like it's up against these behemoths, you know, five-story commercial buildings where we might have a different situation. These are small reading buildings. Urban Cowboy reads one-and-a-half stories, most of it, with the porch line. So yeah, that's my opinion. I agree with staff recommendation.
I concur. I agree with Caitlin. You know, and I do realize sometimes it can be treated a little, sometime, maybe on a corner, but in this case, I think it could almost set a precedent going forward with it. But like you, I do commend the case, because it is very well put together. And also, I do also commend, which was, I was trying to look at it objectively in that sense of trying to keep the trees, and has nothing to do with historical commission, but I did appreciate that, the effort for that. However, I feel like it could set more of a bad precedence because of its location on that corner. So I also agree with staff recommendation.
I want to add to that. Given the narrow nature of the lot, I really do appreciate the small footprint and thought and effort that's been put into this. The massing, holding it one-and-a-half stories seems important to me, but I do think the staff's recommendation to consider a reduction in that side setback does seem like it could be appropriate and give you more buildable area on the lot.
Motion?
This is a tough one for me, because as a neighbor, resident of Lachlan Springs, I'm very aware of the many examples of two-story houses that are plopped in the middle of one or one-and-a-half-story houses. But the design guidelines do say quite clearly that houses are supposed to match adjacent and historic, immediately adjacent historic context. And the letter we received from Councilman Withers and the Neighborhood Association are, I find persuasive as well. So it's difficult, I'm sorry, but I think I agree with you all.
So I make a motion that we go with staff recommendation for 1521 Woodland Street.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? None? Motion passes. Thank you for your work. Thank you.
Madam Chair, did we want to take a recess, or we're beginning to proceed?
Shall we do that? I kind of took my break, so. Does anyone else want to take a five-minute? You're good? All right, five-minute, please. Okay, we are going, we're going to be back in order, and our legal counsel would like to make a comment on the deferral of 17, 17 Villa, please.
Commissioner Mosley had, you expressed a question about possibly retroactively putting the time for the decision. And while you can't do that, I do want to point out that next month, should you decide, let's say you decide that they are in violation and you want to issue a citation, you can make the date of compliance 30 days instead of 60 days. So that is an option.
That was good. Thank you so much. All right, Ms. Jenny?
Okay. Tried to adjust the volume, so hopefully that's better. It's cold, it's loud, I don't know what's happening today. Anyway, next is 1620 Sumner Avenue. You should have received some comment from Councilman Withers. So the house at 1620 Sumner is a circa 1935 house, which contributes to the character of the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The house sits on a large, irregular-shaped lot. It faces Sumner, and there's an alley along the back and the left side of the lot. An existing garage is accessed by a driveway, both from Sumner and one from the side alley. The application is to demolish a portion of the existing outbuilding and construct additions. So these existing shed-roofed additions will be demolished. Staff routinely approves demolition of outbuildings and finds this demolition to be appropriate as well. The proposed design is one story tall and meets the guidelines for height, square footage, roof form, and materials. The proposed design includes a side gable that will face the alley. The slope of this roof is 312, and while the guidelines require at least 412, staff finds that this reduced roof slope could be appropriate in this instance, as it allows the ridge height to remain consistent with that on the existing portion of the garage. Staff's only concern with the proposal is the sighting. The guidelines require that outbuildings be 20 feet from the primary structure. The front corner of the existing garage sits 18 feet 5 inches from the back corner of the house, and we're fine with this condition remaining. However, the applicant would like to construct an addition in front of the existing garage, creating a 15-foot-long area where the house and garage are only separated by that 18-foot 5-inch difference. Further, the guidelines state that outbuildings should be located close to the alley at the rear of the lot. The new construction here would be occurring in front of the existing outbuilding, beside the house rather than behind it. The commission has approved outbuildings inside yards and outbuildings closer than 20 feet to primary structures in situations where lot constraints prevent more appropriate sighting. This lot has plenty of square footage where the outbuilding could be constructed and still meet the guidelines. The applicant could meet the guidelines by adding new construction beside and behind this existing portion of the garage that they'd like to keep. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the proposed outbuilding, finding it does not meet section 2BH2 of the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay guidelines. Questions for me?
Doesn't seem to be.
Think the applicant is here?
Okay.
I am Lucas Symington. I did the design. The letter that Councilman Withers so graciously sent in without any prodding pretty much stole all of my arguments, so I'll just re, go through everything that he said. So as was shown, the lean-to portion is planned to be demolished, and then we would like to add on in front of and to the left or away from the house toward the alley side. The reasoning for keeping the, as was shown, the existing structure is 18 foot 5, which lines up with the current driveway that comes in from the street. So that's the reason for keeping the spacing the way it is. There was some more pictures that were submitted. Do they have those, or was it just the ones that you showed, that were submitted with the?
There may be another picture, too, in the staff recommendation. I don't know if they all made it into the report.
The other argument that we have is, from a site perspective, from the street, you really can't see, because it is up on a grade and it is still behind the house. Had I known that the other pictures weren't in, I would have brought copies of them with me. I guess if you go back to the original, to the first picture that you had up from the street, you can kind of see, yeah, that one. So there is trees to the left as well. As you go down the street that way, the view of the garage from the back is blocked. So really, I think the only issue is just the setback away from the structure, and so we're asking for 18 inches is what we're asking for. Like I said, Councilman Withers stole all of my arguments, so I don't really have anything else to say. I would like to reserve time for responses to anything that you have to say.
Any questions to the applicant at the moment? Okay, we may have some. Thank you.
Let me ask you one quick thing. Did you do any studies at all, looking at the 20 feet, and see that because of it, you were going to have some other constraints? Although it's that extra, I guess it's 18 inches? That extra, like, did it?
Right.
It'd be harder, it'd be easier to, like, to accept if you said, well, I did 18 inches, and then my car flipped over or something, you know? Is it?
Yeah, if, so if we went to the 20 feet, then the garage would not line up with the alley, or sorry, with the driveway anymore? So just from a visual perspective from the street, you have a long, straight driveway, and then you're going to have the garage offset by 18 inches.
Were you able to, and I guess because of the curb cut, you couldn't move the driveway?
Right. And the driveway is, if you go back to the other, yeah, so the driveway is extremely long, and it is actually between two hills on the front, and then removing, shifting over the driveway was not, is not in our plan.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll have a question for you, too, please. What about considerations of putting all the new construction behind the existing garage?
Yeah, we could do that. It would, it would completely change the, our goal is to increase the feel of the backyard. And so if we shifted it to the back, then we've essentially lost half of the backyard. Because you would, again, you would have to move it back far enough to where you could shift it over to get that 20 feet, to where it wouldn't line up. Or if you moved it straight back, then you would have a pie-shaped section to the left there that would be unusable.
Okay.
I do, I'm sorry.
Come on, Commissioners.
I've got one question for you, because, and I applaud, or I guess respect the desire to keep this structure really low-hung, or low-slung. You're creating, from the front view, it creates sort of a really long and somewhat, you know, uninterrupted elevation. Is there, would it drastically influence the design or desirability of it if that front gable expressed itself and you sort of completed the form of the original building, and you slid it back, say, even as much as six inches a foot, so that you get a corner board and a proper corner that comes down at that? It seems to me that it would create a scenario where you don't have a long, as long and uninterrupted, it's 30 feet, 30-ish feet wide, is that about right?
Yeah. Are you saying shift the, to access from the rear alley?
Take the double car garage and just push it back on the lot, 18 inches or something like that, so that it's not a drastic change, but it would complete the form of that front piece. It would break the massive.
You're saying keep the front, keep the front corner where it is, and then, yeah. Yeah, that's.
You know, just in terms of the architecture of it, not the issue with 18 and 1/2 or the 20 feet, just the appearance of it. Because building it closer to the street, it becomes a more prominent facade and is more noticeable in that respect.
Yeah. Well, and like, so the original house structure, it was added on to before the zoning overlay was implemented. And so the original house structure stopped about where the face of the dormer on the back is. So it's still, even by us shifting it forward, it's still going to be behind where the original house structure ended.
Any more questions? Okay. Open public hearing? Close public hearing?
I'm kind of on both sides of this a little bit. The one thing I think worked against it, that it is a long driveway, so it could, you know, it could move it over a little bit, but, but I'm not sure if it's better if it moves closer to the alley or not there, so. No, anyway, that's kind of where my thoughts are at the moment. Anyway, that's kind of where my thoughts are at the moment.
So if I'm, if I'm reading this right, it's the original, so the 18 and 1/2 feet is the main issue, correct?
So, Sean, can you go to the next? The, I think on your screen you should be able to see the box is shaded there. That is the original portion that's going to remain, and so it is 18, 5 from the back corner of the house. So that, because that exists, we would be okay with leaving that piece there, we just don't want construction in front of it, which kind of creates more space with that less separation, and then now we're building in the side as opposed to in the back. So those were our two issues.
I mean, on some points, I agree with Commissioner Withers' comments. You know, just applauding that it is a small, one-story, you know, outbuilding, not requesting, you know, living space upstairs and all these other things. But yeah, again, I guess I'd ask, you know, Commissioner Mosley to expand on maybe his ideas of, you know, pushing that maybe to the back, you know, or something. You know, just shifting that, instead of sitting in front, you know, couldn't it sit on the back? Or, again, you know, I'm not sure, I don't want to design it for them, but that would make it a little less obtrusive up front and less close to the house because it's hitting the original plane of the, what stands there now. I don't know, in my opinion.
Yeah, to me, it seems like it's, oh, go ahead. To me, it seems like it's a large enough lot that the carport portion could be shifted to the rear. I mean, that's the, you're building the new driveway from the alley to that portion anyway. So I know they're trying to preserve, I think their reasoning was trying to preserve more backyard, but it is, it is, it's a generous, generous yard, and to kind of preserve what's happening in the front seems to be more, is more important to us as the historic commission. So could that portion just shift, shift back?
I'll, yeah, I guess I'll add to that. The street-side elevation, visible from the street, not from the alley, is because it's moving closer, the 18 and 1/2, if they were building 18 and 1/2 and there were not a structure there, do a 20, you know. 20 is what, 20 is the guideline, do a 20. The 18 and 1/2, I think, gives 18 inches worth of, in my mind, 18 inches worth of grace that aligning that with historic structure and where the garage was placed is not as problematic for me in this instance because it's a utilitarian building, it's very small and certainly not even coming close to upstaging the house or being, the massing being anywhere close to what the house is. But the, because it's so utilitarian and the front facade is uninterrupted, I would recommend that it have some sort of shape of a T, or even if it were sort of cheated to the, to the front of more of a T roof shape, then, then being, the front facade being flat, architecturally would make for a more, for a structure that were more in keeping and kind of completed that, completed the form and added a little, just one little bit more of articulation to the street-facing facade. Those are my comments.
Sure.
If we were to get approved, the addition in the front, shifting the side alley access back to create that T would not be, would not be an issue.
Okay. Very good, thank you. That helps us make a decision and add it to the recommendation. Is there a motion? We're looking to you, Ben Mosley.
The 2B 1H2 is, I'm looking for exactly, I was paying attention, but I just don't know, is that setbacks or distance from the house?
Yeah, it's location, it was, I can find it exactly, if you hang on one second.
2B 1.
Outbuildings should be situated on a lot as is historically typical for surrounding historic buildings, and then it gets into the 20-foot separation as well.
So I'll make a motion with respect to 1620 Sumner that the, the application be accepted as submitted with the following conditions. That the front facade be articulated by working with staff or coming up with a new drawing that creates a, that completes the gable end and creates a T so that the front-facing facade is more architecturally articulated instead of an uninterrupted continuous eve line and continuous front facade, that so that there would be a corner board and a minimum of 18 inches of separation between the side-entered garage and the front. And in terms of addressing 2BH, I find in this case that, given the size of the building, the low height and matching the form of the existing historic utilitarian building on the site, that the 18, 19 inches closer to the, to the building is not contrasting too greatly with, with the guidelines, certainly if it were new construction, 20 feet would be the minimum.
A motion? Is there a second?
Could you repeat that motion? I just jumped in.
There is the long motion and a second to that long motion. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? All right. So that motion passes.
This next case is an application to construct a new house on Lillian Street. The address is 1311 Lillian Street, and that is the same lot that has a house facing Fatherland, 1308 Fatherland. And that house on Fatherland is contributing. Typically, it's not appropriate to build a detached house behind a house on one lot in most situations, but this lot goes the full depth of the block. It goes from street to street and has established street patterns on both. And the, the new house will be, as I said, on the Father, or on the Lillian Street side and will fit in with the rhythm of infill or the street pattern on, on Lillian. That's, photograph at the top is a picture of a fence that's at the vacant side of that lot now, and the blue building up in the top of that picture is, I think, the outbuilding currently on, on the slot. No, it's even at the lot next door. And then the bottom are the two houses on either side of where the new proposed infill will go. Both of those houses were approved by the commission in 2015. The proposed infill will be compatible with those houses, the existing pattern of houses on Lillian Street. And as you see here and could see in the photograph, the grade is pretty steep, dropping from Fatherland down to Lillian Street, so much so that there's almost a full basement level exposed on the front facade. And in most places, you would not see a walkout basement on the front elevation of a house. Sometimes you see it on the rear. But here, the grade is so steep that it's possible to have that without making the house any taller than, than it just is going to be because of the grade or making the foundation taller. And so the applicant proposed, or is proposing, a second, a primary entrance on the primary level and then a second entrance below that and essentially a walkout basement. It's not, as I said, it's not a common feature that you see on houses historically on the front. And we worked or discussed with the applicant how that may be appropriate, but it should be screened so that it still reads, the house still reads as the, the primary entrance being on the, the main level of the house, and essentially one primary entrance. And as you can see here, they've, they've done that pretty nicely. The application materials of the infill will be cement fiber siding, split face block foundation, asphalt roof, metal roof on the front porch. All of those are appropriate. Staff would need to approve the color of roofing and the window and door selections. Staff recommends approval of the proposed one-and-a-half-story infill at 1311 Lillian Street with the conditions that the floor height is consistent with adjacent houses, that the front setback is consistent with adjacent houses, that the window and door selections are approved by staff, and the roof color approved by staff, and that the utility and mechanicals are located behind the midpoint of the building. Meeting those conditions, staff finds that this project meets Lachlan Springs design guidelines.
No. Applicant? Are you here?
Applicant is here. My name is Bill Johnson with Noble Johnson Architects, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Are you comfortable with all the recommendations?
We are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd move approval of 1311 Lillian Street with staff recommendations.
Motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any unopposed? Unopposed? No. The motion passes. Thank you.
I don't believe we opened public hearing.
Oh, did we?
I don't think there's anyone.
Oh, yeah, we didn't.
I don't think there's anyone here, but just to be sure.
I will do that. I'm moving too quickly. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move on to 105 South 12th Street. It's a circa 1911 folk Victorian frame home. The house's lot was cut off in the back of 1200 Woodlands. You can see that it's quite a small lot, and the rear of the house is basically on the rear property line. The lot is just 59 feet along South 12th Street and 50 feet deep, and it's under 3,000 square feet. Your typical lot in East Nashville is anywhere from like 6,000 to 8,000 square feet. The back of the house sits on or close to the rear property line. Because of the shape and size of the lot, adding on to the house is a challenge. The applicant seeks to use some of the square footage in the roof for living purposes, since the small site does not allow for a rear addition, which again makes adding on to the house challenging. The historic house's main roof form is a hip. On the right side of the hip, the applicant is proposing a rear, I'm sorry, a side dormer. The design guidelines state that the ridge of the dormer should be set down at least two feet off the ridge, and should be, the wall should be two feet from the valley, and the walls of the dormer should be set back two feet from the wall below. This dormer does not really meet any of it, it's just six inches off the ridge, and it's very close to the other side gable form, and it's stacked on the wall below. Staff finds that in this instance, that an exception could be made for the side dormer because of its size and location are necessary in order to add a staircase to the second level. The dormer is larger than what the commission would typically approve, and that is not adequately set off the ridge and valley over the wall below. However, because there's no way to add on to the rear, as there is with almost every house in, in this overlay and most of our overlays, staff finds that flexibility with the design guidelines could be appropriate here in this instance, and staff does find this instance to be appropriate. Overall, the dormer scale is not overly large, and it is designed to be the minimal size it can be while still serving to get the stairwell upstairs. On the rear, the applicant plans to add a gabled extension. On the right side, or the alley side, the gable portion of the roof is offset from the roof six inches, allowing the house's original roof form to still be identified. However, on the left side, this gabled addition at the rear will not inset and will eradicate the rear hip roof form. Here's the proposed left elevation. You can see that the rear of the hip has been removed. Here are the images of the roof with the dotted line showing the back hip that will be eradicated and made into a gable. And then here are the front and rear facades, and here's just a second floor plan showing kind of the space that they're getting upstairs. So while staff understands the challenges of the site and its lack of a rear yard for a rear addition, staff finds that completely removing the back hip portion of the roof is not appropriate. It alters the primary roof form, which is a significant architectural feature, in a manner that does not allow for the existing form to still be discerned. The proposed changes to the roof are also not reversible. If the addition were to be removed in the future, nothing would remain of the hip on this back left side of the house. So, so staff finds that the alterations to the roof form on the left side are not appropriate, and we consider it to be partial demolition. The shed roof, the shed roof dormer is also, is also proposed for the back part of the left facade. While the dormer is offset from the ridge and inset three feet from the wall below, staff finds that it is not appropriate because a dormer can only be constructed if the, kind of, if the changes to the rear form at the back are approved, or are. Basically, the dormer is there because it's, they're removing the hip and creating a The applicant also plans to alter a window opening on the right facade, which is considered partial demolition. Staff is not supportive of altering this window opening as it is highly visible from the street and is not in the back half of the house, and the new window opening will not be an appropriate size and will not have either vertical or square proportions. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the right side dormer with the condition that staff approve the window and window material and roof shingles. And then staff recommends disapproval of the alterations to the roof form on the left side of the house, finding that this proposed partial demolition and alterations to the roof form do not meet Section 2B of the design guidelines for Lachlan Springs. I should also add note that we are also recommending disapproval of the alteration to the window opening on the left side. The applicant is here. I'm happy to answer any questions before turning it over to the applicant.
I may have a question for you.
Okay. Applicant?
Hi, Caitlin Smouse, 912 Bailey Street. I am the architect with 912 Architects. Just wanted to just reiterate some of the facts of this house. So the lot is 59 feet wide, 50 feet deep. The current house is about 1,200 square feet. So it's very challenging and a very unusual lot in this neighborhood, and I think in pretty much any neighborhood in Nashville, where we really don't have any opportunity to add on to the rear. Adding on to the side is pretty hard, too, with the roof form and with just where the property lines are, where utilities are, parking, everything like that. So what we really are trying to do is give her, it gives a client an extra, it's about 500 square feet upstairs, to put an actual master and increase the value and usability of this house. You know, adding space upstairs in this situation is definitely, I think, the least invasive, you know, most appropriate thing we can do. And, you know, it's funny with these hip houses, you have a lot of space up there, there's a lot of height, but it's also hard to actually get bedrooms and usable space and egress windows because you've got to pull the gable off, you've got to do a dormer, you've got to figure out how to do that while following the guidelines. So the first thing I just, I appreciate staff's recommendation for the approval of the south-facing dormer because it really is the best location for a stair. That's good. You know, this house, it's a kind of typical Victorian layout, you know, there's, there's very limited opportunities to add a staircase within the footprint, and so we're kind of putting this entry hall and coming over the bathroom and over utility, you know, utility space, and so adding that dormer really just gains a lot of good space. So what we want to do in the back, and I know, let's see, that's a side, street plan is a little hard to read, but, you know, we, we're adding this gable on the back, and that south side, the right side that faces the alley, really is a very visible side of the house. And so instead of, you know, so instead of just lining it up along the whole back part, we're pulling it down that six inches and pulling it off of that hip on that side that you can see, so that it is, you know, obvious that that, that part is added on and is set back from the historic portion of the roof. But if you look at the, let's see, if you look at the second floor plan, I think it's kind of clear what we're trying to do here. Those aren't full-height walls, you know, those are four-foot knee walls and five-foot knee walls, and so by aligning that roof on the north side, it really allows us to actually get some usable space up there. You know, that's You know, that's, this isn't, you know, we're not just blowing it out and trying to get a lot of space. If we were keeping that hip, that dormer would be maybe a third, maybe a third to a half of the size that it is now, and that's just not, it's just, it's not great usable space. So we're really trying to do this in an unobtrusive way, where we're respecting, you know, the visible sightlines and what's, what you're going to see from the street and what you're going to see from the south side and the alley side. And I know, you know, the point was that it's not removable in the future, but I do think by setting it off on that south side, we are showing that, you know, this part is an addition, that dormer is an addition. You know, it's not altering that historic portion. It is altering it, but it's not completely taking away that historic hip form. And then I just also wanted to show, so there's a project that was approved in August, I think against staff's recommendation, is that correct? So this, it's again a hipped roof where there is an addition at the rear. Is there a laser? Is there a laser in here? Not a laser? Okay. Okay. Well, there's a portion where they're adding on right there that's not actually dark, but it's, they're actually pulling, they pulled the roof form straight back, similar to what we're asking to do here, right there. And then they wrap, so that's a new roof, and then that addition is actually wrapped around that hip portion. So this was approved back in August. There, you can see kind of where the new roof connects back to this addition roof. I'm not saying that this is better or worse than what we're asking for. I think what we're doing is slightly less obtrusive than what was done here, and this was recently approved, and I think that's a good precedent to just look at and think about how that applies to our project, because we really aren't, you know, we're doing a little bit less work than this. We can't even add out to the rear. So by allowing us to continue that slope on the north side, it really just, it gives us a lot more opportunities with square footage. So that's all I have.
Thank you. We may have more questions. Okay. Open public hearing? Close public hearing?
Although I realize the challenges of the house, and I actually see the, kind of the effort that went into it to try to really make it work, you know, that, the location of this house and then the mess with that roof form is something that gets a little, I mean, and notwithstanding, I don't know all the circumstances behind that Franklin one, but just looking at this one and the way it sits in that block, it's, I'm a little less inclined on the roof form change on it. It's why I'm still kind of with, well, I'm still with staff recommendation, and I'm open to hear what my other commissioners may say that may make me rethink it differently, but that's kind of where I am right now.
Melissa, on the shed roof dormer, is the, remind me, is the form of that objectionable, or is it really just the gable altering the hip?
Right. If the existing roof had that kind of gable on the back, we would probably be okay with that, with the shed dormer. It's just, it's more, it's not the dormer so much as the changes today.
As changing of the roof form. Okay. Then a question for the applicant, then. Could the gable be inset six inches? Because that would, that would make the problem go away.
Okay. I mean, it could, but structurally, that dormer structurally can't really just like wrap around that inset. I mean, we could, you know, that's actually part of kind of our argument why this was a good compromise, too, is that if it is set back, that dormer, even if it's a third of the size, is still going to hide that setback from view. But we, you know, I, structurally, though, I don't, it's going to be really difficult to like wrap that dormer around that inset. So it's not, it wouldn't really work. Wouldn't be a good solution.
Remember the one, the example they brought up? I did not like that design, but we did it because of a tree, if I remember correctly. So if we were willing to do that for that property, I didn't like it, but I think I voted in favor of it. This is an even more challenging lot?
Yeah. If I recall that, now that you mentioned that, it was actually not seen from the road. It was totally on the other side. I mean, we can't go back there, but.
What do you mean? What was?
Like this one, you'll be able to see it, the change. The other one was like past the visual plane.
No, I mean, if you want to bring the slide up of the example that was given, it's quite visible from, if you've showed, yeah, I mean.
So if it's not this, then I leap to, so what is it? Yeah, I mean, what could it be? And I think the answer to that is if you inset both, you know, sort of the rear gable and permit the.
About six inches.
The stair, yeah, six inches, and you permit the stair. Yeah, there's, there's no, I don't know what happens in that front room or how much, you know, your, your actual head height is, you know, in a dormered roof, you know, short of just taking the sidewalks and jacking the roof up, you get, and they dashed it in here, you sort of get this rectilinear place where you arrive up at the top of the stair. That's the only place where there's headroom. So you get something that's spitballing here, eight, not even eight feet wide, you know, seven feet wide, and it's 12 feet long, and, you know, there's some space underneath. You know, you'd have to crawl, you'd have to get one of those little tubs with a door on the side of it, so you can crawl in and then turn the water on. You might drown. I mean, it's that sort of scenario. So I think, that's not a reason to approve this, but if it's not this, you know, what is it? And I'm not for just allowing something just because. But if this isn't it, I'm not sure what it looks like if there is to be an addition allowed to this house on the second floor. And I think the options for the, that the applicant has, and the lengths that they've gone to here to not propose a side addition, which would be, could be worse. I mean, if you were presenting competing cases, you know, you've got a centrally located, complicated little bay that you couldn't really, it'd be very difficult to work around. And the other side of that coin is, you know, with a lot configuration in homes, maybe some lots weren't made to be added on to. I think that's really what you're, what you're pointing this applicant and the owner towards. Again, that's not a convinced, necessarily convincing argument to say this is the right thing to do or it should happen, but I'm having, I'm struggling to find other ways in which any usable additional space on the lot could be found.
I think on this one, I agree with Commissioner Tibbs and kind of support as recommended by staff, staff recommendations. I feel like the proposed addition to the roof is too obtrusive, but agree that the dormer could be acceptable.
Making a drop.
I'll start off by saying, then I'll just shoot out a motion, then. I make a motion that we go with staff recommendation for 105 South 12th Street.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay. Robin, did you get that? Or shall we raise hands? Yes. Okay. No. Okay, wait. Okay, let's do this. Raise your hand for approving the motion. Okay. Those opposed to the motion. Okay. Thank you. That does pass. We have four. Okay. The motion passes.
1502 Cedar and circa 1930 frame in stone bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood. The applicant is proposing to construct a rear addition that is wider than the historic house. The application also involves removing an existing rear addition, side patio and columns, and altering window and door openings, all of which are considered partial demolition. The applicant proposes several changes to the historic house, which are considered partial demolition. First, the applicant proposes to demolish a rear addition. The date of construction of the addition is not known, but it does not appear on the 1950 Stanborn's maps. Staff finds that the rear addition's date of construction, roof form, and overall design do not contribute to the historic and architectural character of the historic house, and we find that its removal is appropriate. The applicant also proposes to remove a side patio and columns. It is not clear if the side patio and columns are original to the house or if they ever had a roof on them. The stone seems to match the stone on the foundation of the house, but when you look at the Stanborn map from the 1950s, which is included here, it doesn't show the side patio, which typically, if it had a roof on it, it would show it with a dotted porch line, like the front porch in the rear. So we're not quite sure about what it was historically. The oldest Stanborn map we have is a 1951 Stanborn map. Let's see. The 1968 Property Assessor's photo, too, which I didn't include here because it's taken from the other direction, so it's not helpful because you can't see that side facade. But we find it likely that at least in 1951 it was uncovered, since it doesn't appear in the Stanborn map. Let's see. So staff finds that removing this side porch is appropriate, just because it's not quite clear what it was historically or if it is historic. And also technically, the commission doesn't review things that are uncovered, so if it was just a deck without a roof on it, we wouldn't, we wouldn't review it. And we've allowed the removal of stairs before and kind of side platforms in the past. So the applicant is also proposing to alter window and door openings on the front and side facades, which again is considered to be partial demolition. On the front facade, the applicant intends to shift the front door to the right so that it is centered on the facade. Typically, MHCC staff is not supportive of moving windows and door openings on the front facade unless there is evidence that they were formerly in different locations or different sizes. In this case, the 1968 Property Assessor photo shows the front door in its current location, kind of shifted to the side. Staff, however, finds that it's more than likely that the front door would have been centered on the facade, because one, the, everything about the facade is centered, and the stairs are centered, and it would seem most logical and most likely that the door was formerly in the center with the center stairs leading up to it. We do know that this house has had a lot of changes over the years, particularly on the side facades. There's a lot of window openings and door openings that are clearly not original, so staff surmises that this was, the door was shifted at some point in time prior to 1968. So on the left facade, at the back of the house, the applicant intends to change a door opening into a paired window opening and to slightly alter the size of a window opening on its right. These are located kind of all the way back at the house, back, at the back of the house, beyond the midpoint, and so staff finds that they, those changes are appropriate. On the right facade, again, the applicant is planning to alter several window openings in the back half of the house. This also, this involves removing a door opening, which is kind of like where, in the middle with nothing leading up to it, I think there was formerly some stairs here, so obviously that probably isn't original. And again, these openings and changes are all at the back half and not very visible, so staff is supportive of them. So moving on to the rear addition. The addition will extend wider than the historic house. Staff finds this to be appropriate because the lot is unusually wide at over 73 feet. The commission has approved wider additions on wider lots in the past. The wall of the addition will be inset with a 1x4 alcove before extending wider. However, you can see here that because of the porch, which I'll get to, if you look at the picture here in a minute, there's a kind of a overhang in a porch and a platform, that part won't be inset, but the wall of the addition itself will be inset by the 1x4. Here's the front facade again. You can see the wider portion of the house, which is about six inches lower than the historic house. And here is that side facade, which becomes wider. And here is the left facade. On this facade, the addition steps out wider to kind of line up with that side bay, so it's about one foot wider than the back wall of the house, but it's lining up with that back bay, which staff finds to be appropriate, because it's just one foot and probably won't even be that noticeable from the street. And here's the rear of the addition. And here's the roof plan. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the addition and partial demolition with our standard conditions regarding approving the windows and doors, the roof shingle color, and the HVAC location. Before I move forward, just wanted to point out that we did get some staff, some neighbor comments that were forwarded to the commissioners earlier this week. I'm happy to answer any questions, or if there's.
Regarding the door, is there any physical evidence inside, casing weirdness?
I would have to defer to the architect. I'm not, he, they didn't present any information like that.
Okay, I'll ask that.
Have we seen this one before? This house? I don't think so. Not that I remember.
Maybe there's just one similar with that weird staircase on the side in the last couple of months. Never mind.
Okay.
Applicant?
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Ward with Alagord Architects. We are pleased to be here representing 1502 Cedar. Thanks, Melissa, for describing it all fairly, fairly well. We had two or three meetings to sort of work toward these different solutions and tried to be very incremental in how we sort of addressed how it's set on the side as well as the massing.
Regarding my question I just asked, do you know?
When you're inside the house.
The reason I ask, just, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, sir.
I think that it's, I just, I'm not, it would be odd for somebody to move a door for no reason, and if, if they didn't do anything in the past.
Well, we'll say the house was divided up into about three or four different apartments, which explains some of what was happening on the side. It's obvious when you walk through that things have been added and altered for the conversion to different rental units. Bathrooms were added, kitchens were added. On the side, part of that confusion is I see traces of two totally different sets of exterior stairs. There are remnants on the ground, pieces of concrete, sidewalks that don't go anywhere, windows that used to be doors, doors that are windows. There are all kinds of strange things. So if it was, I think it would probably have a lot to do with some of those alterations over time for rental.
But in your examinations of the door, does anything stick out like this is not?
There is nothing I see inside that says it at the moment, no. I mean, we haven't demolished anything. It's pretty much intact, so. It is a siding house, so it's a little bit easier to move those things than it is with a masonry house.
Anything else for the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Open public hearing? Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Okay. That door does seem very odd. And interesting that you couldn't find any kind of historical Sanborn map. No, yeah.
Sanborn maps wouldn't show us the location of the door, unfortunately.
Pictures.
And the... we couldn't find any photographs supporting it. So, what we found that supported it was the symmetry of the existing front and the symmetry of the stairs.
The reason I asked is, we recently had a request to relocate a door that we denied, and so I just wanted to make sure we're taking care to really consider it.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or motion to... Is there a motion?
On 1502 Cedar Lane, I recommend we accept... pass staff recommendation.
There's a motion? Is there a second? There's a second? All in favor? Okay. Any opposed? None? The motion passes. Thank you.
So, next on the agenda is the consolidation of the Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines. Just as a reminder, the Historic Zoning Commission received funding from the Tennessee Historical Commission for a Design Guideline Consolidation Project. The project began in January 2019, and the grant period ended on September 30th of this year. A draft came to the commission on September 18th, and the project was deferred until March of next year. The staff report available online and the Nashville.gov website provides more in-depth information about the project and the process for anyone that may be unfamiliar with it. There's also been previous public hearings, which are archived on YouTube that people can pull up. Just as a reminder, the project was first presented to the commission in three parts. Part one is a consolidation of all the Neighborhood Conservation Design Guidelines into one universal set of design guidelines, with part two being individual chapters for each district. All the Neighborhood Conservation Design Guidelines are already very similar, but the consolidation will provide an opportunity to reorganize and add clarifying language. The third component was to create new design guidelines in a plans book for outbuildings to provide more flexibility in terms of size and design and guidance. Last month, you voted to remove part three, the form book, from consideration, and to break up the discussion of the rest of it into different sections for each meeting. So, some things to keep in mind, these are design guidelines and not rules, so they're not hard and fast rules. So, the language here does not preclude you from continuing to make decisions on a case-by-case basis based on the physical conditions of the site. We are continuing to take public comment, as you will here today, so staff is not going to make a recommendation until March, so that we can collect all of that public comment from everyone that wants to comment and bring it back to you. So, with that in mind, we recommend that you now take public comment on any portion of the guidelines. And then I have some information to guide your discussion on those specific sections that you plan to talk about today.
Do we discuss first or public hearing?
Public hearing first.
Okay. Open public hearing.
Hi, my name's Martin Wick. I'm at 912 Bailey Street. Been a stakeholder on this since the beginning, and I wrote a letter recently that I sent, and I hope you've all had a chance to read it. But since this is the only... basically the only public forum we have to get those comments out, there were a few that I just wanted to make in person here today. Specifically, or actually, this one's not so specific. One thing that I thought was kind of interesting about the demolition section in particular was that, at the very beginning of it, there's a new line that starts the section that says "The primary purpose of Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlays is to prevent demolition of historic buildings and their character-defining features." And I think the fact that someone felt like that needed to be added in seems like a very reactionary thing to do to this document, and kind of is... seems a little indicative of a lot of the problems that at least I've had with the document overall. The existing guidelines already have every protection against demolition within them without needing that line in it, and they already include a much better description of their purpose. In the opening sections, it describes them as "giving neighborhoods greater control over development, stabilizing property values. They decrease the risk of investing in one's building, promote heritage tourism, protect viable urban housing stock, and preserve natural resources by conserving building materials." The fact that this line was added to the demolition section kind of seems indicative of fear of development in our historic neighborhoods, which is kind of unusual right now because that's what's happening in Nashville. All across our neighborhoods, development is happening. The housing market is evolving very, very quickly, and I think this commission should be striving to work with homeowners, not just to protect their neighborhoods, but to allow them to achieve what this housing market requires at this point in Nashville. So, I think that's my two minutes, so... If you want to read.
Thank you.
I'm going to continue this. Caitlin Smouse, 912 Bailey Street, 912 Architects. So, this is also part of Martin's letter. He made a lot of really good educated points, and so I'm going to keep reading it. And just want to talk about adding siding to the reviewable actions in demolition. We kind of, both of us and as a firm, kind of believe that's a mistake. At the November meeting, several people stood up to say that adding restrictions should require the same amount of community input as the original guidelines did, and we agree with that. This guideline is one of the main examples of why that should be the case. The purpose of a Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay is to protect the character of a neighborhood and its massing and scale, and if a neighborhood wanted to protect the siding and windows on their houses, they could have applied for a Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay, or even added those pieces to their original Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. I have... or Martin has also heard several commissioners say that they thought siding should be included initially in those guidelines. It wasn't, and that could have been a reason why neighborhoods chose to pass those guidelines. Adding additional restrictions to NCZOs should not be part of this consolidation. Siding is also not structurally relevant enough to prevent its removal. Anywhere that it is structurally relevant likely means that the building did not include sheathing or some other layer of structure. In those cases, it is likely that the building envelope was very inefficient, and requiring siding to remain is increasing the cost of ownership of the house. Robin mentioned in one of the community meetings that she had seen at least three projects that have collapsed when siding was removed, but, I mean, we've worked on 100 and... over 100 projects in these overlays now, and not one of them has collapsed. I mean, I'm sure there's hundreds, if not thousands, more. So, citing three examples out of potentially thousands seems a little bit of an overreaction, I guess, to us. Siding and roofing are typically easily replaceable because they are most exposed parts of a building, and they deteriorate and can be removed and replaced without damaging the structure. There's also usually no vapor barrier behind old siding. Considering that a vapor barrier is now required by codes, telling a homeowner that they can no longer add that is damaging to the longevity of a renovation. So, that's why. I think also removing the color, the reviewable... the color of roofing is a great thing, just as a positive note.
Yay. Yay. We like to hear positive notes as well. Anyone else?
Hello. John Tissell, 405 Fairfax Avenue. At the November meeting of this commission, representatives from Belmont Hillsborough Neighbors and Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Association reported to you that the boards of these organizations had voted unanimously to oppose the proposed changes to the Conservation Zoning Guidelines. Neighborhood leaders and our council member have continued to meet and to discuss this proposal. Our position is that we would like to opt out of the guidelines consolidation project. Our neighborhoods support conservation zoning. We are not afraid of change, nor are we opposed to the possibility of a future amendment to our guidelines. But the process so far has been a top-down effort. Our communities were never asked if we needed changes. If there had been widespread support in our neighborhoods for this project, we and you would have heard about it, and we have not. A single set of guidelines applied to all Conservation Zoning districts is unnecessary, and in fact, it is harmful because it limits the autonomy of individual neighborhoods. If some districts want to amend their guidelines, then let them do that with help from the Historic Commission staff. But if others do not want to change at this time, then why compel them to do so? Do you, as commissioners, think it is appropriate to impose new guidelines on a district when the neighborhood board, elected by residents, has voted unanimously to oppose those new guidelines? Is that where you want to go with this? We ask you to step back and take a look at the larger question. This is not about negotiating specific language in the proposal. Rather, we object to the way this process is being conducted, and we do not want the guidelines for Belmont Hillsborough and Hillsborough West End to be changed at this time in this way. Earlier in this meeting, you told an applicant that these guidelines are the result of a neighborhood process, a democratic process. We ask you to support that process now. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin, have we received any other public comments via your office?
Not since the last grouping that you saw.
Okay.
But I'm sure we will continue to throughout the process.
Right. Were there comments that were for... Generally, let me ask that... let me restate that question. What has been the general questions or... Yeah.
There are 27 different Neighborhood Conservation Zoning overlays, and we've heard from two that would like to opt out. We've received comments in favor of it. We've received comments against it. We've received comments in favor or against just very specific pieces of it, and again, we're still gathering that information.
And what are the specifics? Can you just share some of that?
There's...
Too many.
Too many. But, I mean, you have all the public comment we have received so far. And the notes from the meetings, from the stakeholder meetings and the community meetings. Does that help?
Okay. So, to guide your discussion today, the sections you voted on last month to discuss at this public hearing, they're all in part one and include principles, demolition, and materials. To begin with, the current language is confusing because in one place, it sounds like only portions seen from the public right of way have reviewed, but in another, it says that those portions not seen shall be treated differently, sort of assuming that they would be reviewed. Since the creation of the first overlay, all new construction and demolition have been reviewed, but those portions not seen given more leeway for change. So, we just recommend some change in the language that clarifies that long-term policy. Is there anything you'd like to comment on or discuss about that issue? Next, we recommend removing this image that's in all the Neighborhood Conservation Zoning overlays, as it again causes some confusion. People often read it as that gray area showing the only area where an addition can take place, when obviously that's not what it was meant to say. So, we thought it might be easier to just have this list, and this is just an example of a portion of it, a list of the type of actions that wouldn't need to be reviewed. And again, most of the list just reiterates the policy for several decades. Any comments or questions on that section?
I think that's a positive change. Makes it more clear, since applicants, I mean, the drawing doesn't do anything except create confusion.
Thank you. We recommend no longer reviewing solar panels. The technology has changed over the years, and they are far less visually jarring than they used to be, and of course, that technology continues to improve as well. And plus, they have to be where they have to be in order to work, and they do not create a major change to the building. It's usually just a small hole or two or three, and so they can easily be removed and the original roof form be retained. Any questions or comments on that?
I think this presumes that... I've not seen an application where it wouldn't be applied economically in the way that the picture on the left shows, but I can certainly see an application where there would be an opportunity to do more of a superstructure and, you know, maximize the... the horizontal surface maximizes the amount of sun exposure in a panel. And I would... that would be different than the picture shown, and I think this presumes that somebody's going to do that. I would be more comfortable administratively approving solar panels, not just, sure, whatever, go for it, solar panels, yep. I don't know if anybody else has... I mean, I'm no expert on solar panels, and I would imagine any homeowner who's going to do it wants to do it in the most economical way possible. But I can... there's a lot of things that I can't imagine that we have seen, so that'll be my comment there.
The language that you're proposing is just not reviewing at all?
I could see... I didn't, but I could see Ben's concern. It could be a superstructure up there on top of them, you know, so...
I agree as well. I think it should be reviewed administratively.
Yeah.
Or some kind of language. I don't know if it's... I mean, this just idea, it's like if it's not directly and unobtrusively tied to the plane of the roof... you know, I don't know how many of y'all see that you're like reviewing a bunch of solar panels, but I don't know. You know, maybe there's language to specify what specific solar panel structures you will not review versus, you know, hey, if it's not specifically tied to the plane of the roof in an unobtrusive manner, I guess that's vague for people, but, you know, so it's not some sort of superstructure, solar panels.
I mean, in some of these cases where the concern is worst-case scenario, you're not worried about the typical application of solar panels, or I think we talked about this in another meeting, roof color. Like, we're not concerned about what color, gray or brown or black or green even. It's like, it's that worst-case scenario of like, you know, neon orange or something, or how did... is there... do we think there's a good way to... Yeah. Is there a way to include review with it being...
I think administratively allows... you could come in for a one-day approval on... in a historic neighborhood, on solar panels, wouldn't hold you up. At least there's, you know, some sort of goalie backup there. You know, you don't have to show up for the whole game, but, you know, you're not just going to send one right in the net. Might it never happen, probably, but I'm just, you know... we would have... I don't know. It's not... maybe not true. We'd have little recourse, but if solar panels aren't reviewed, there would be an argument to say that this is not... and we've had people make arguments for, this is not the purview of this board, and so therefore you have no standing. Legal could inform on that better than I could, but if it's administrative, it happens, you know, like that, and we're not holding up the process, and it can move forward.
We also recommend no longer requiring review for skylights, but sort of to your point, I think we specify flat, not bubble, you know, certain size, I think, so that, again, to get to that worst-case scenario, would still be reviewed.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and maybe... so you've basically attached conditions to skylights.
Yes.
I would recommend some conditions on solar as well. If it's... if it ends up being administratively reviewed, fine, but some protection through a bulleted list of conditions that would prevent that worst-case scenario with solar.
We also recommend no longer requiring... and we've talked about this one a little bit, but it's part of this section, so I wanted to keep it in. We recommend no longer requiring a specific reveal for new lap siding, because historically, lap siding came in a variety of reveals.
That makes sense to me. I agree.
The guidelines would still read as, you know, not contrasting...
The guidelines would still read as, you know, not contrasting greatly in rhythm and materials and openings, and those things, I guess, would still apply if somebody wants a two-foot reveal on their siding.
Possibly, but if you're saying you're not reviewing that...
If you remove it from the guidelines, I think there's still some purview for us to have comment on it and request an alteration.
Definitely, yeah.
When you say, "We're not reviewing it," we're essentially removing the guideline that says it must be this or that, and we're still reviewing it, but it won't be a specific number.
But I would say it's one of those things that if you want to... If this was a concern and you wanted to continue to review it, there needs to be some kind of guidance, so that every case, you don't have applicants wondering on every single case, is this going to be allowed or not? So maybe it's sort of similar to the skylights and the solar panels, where it's a new maximum rather than five inches. Just throwing it out there.
Five inches is very specific. Some of our guidelines, well, this doesn't... I'm not even going to say that. This doesn't lead to clarity, so I'll edit my comment before I say it.
We also recommend not reviewing roof color. There are currently no guidelines regarding roof color. Historically, asphalt shingle came in a variety of colors. This image shows what we think would be the potential worst-case scenario, which is an all-white roof or a roof of multiple colors. Since roofing materials are not a permanent change to historic buildings, staff recommended not reviewing the color.
I'm in agreement with that.
Stop me if I'm going too fast at any point, and you have comments. The demolition section has changed to include policies that the commission has followed for decades, such as clarification of partial demolition and how non-contributing buildings are treated. The major change here is the recommendation to add the removal of siding as a partial demo action. This is very different than what we've done in the past, and again, we've received public comment for and against this. We're still collecting guidance and comments.
I'm personally in favor of adding cladding as a partial demolition. I think oftentimes, weatherboard is a character-defining feature, especially if it includes a drop siding with a bead or some other decorative feature, and so that... I think that's a good addition.
Oh, I was going to add... I mean, I'll keep here, you know, obviously, keep listening to more public comment on this, but I do have pause of adding a new, you know, adding a more restrictive guideline than was approved by the neighborhoods. But I... So that's just for me, for the cladding. I know there were the examples, but I do agree with Martin and Caitlin, just on this specific one, that, you know, that's not the norm, and you do need to change those things. And so that's one that I'm still struggling with, but on the whole right now, I'm not for adding that as an additional requirement.
I'm struggling with the cladding one, too, just because of the... Everything that comes with it. I know we... I mean, just as recently as last month, we saw a structure where the removal of the cladding did lead to further deterioration of the building and then ultimate kind of It wasn't the only factor, but it was a contributing factor. But so... But because of, you know, vapor barrier and insulation and all the things that come with this, I am struggling, too, with the adding that to the guideline. Definitely, if it does get added to the guideline, there are a couple of side notes in the margin about wall insulation, and I don't think we need to be in the business of telling people what type of wall insulation or how to install it. So I would recommend removal of those, because I think that's kind of a dangerous territory.
This may go backwards a little bit, but make sure... I just want to make sure I understand, too. So we would... The public comments for all these things, will we have a... I mean, I just want to make sure that there was something we didn't think about when we, you know, maybe something we've... If we don't have the public comment toward it, and we probably do, but is there a way that we can definitely read the public comments to these different changes, so we can specifically look at it, pros and cons of it? Do you know what I mean?
We have that in the Padlet comments. I think that's mostly a lot of what...
Padlet?
Padlet, yes. It was an online... Message board kind of thing?
Okay.
And we have all the transcripts of that.
You have all the comments, but I think what you're asking is...
Sorted comments.
Is there a way to organize them and group them? And I've done that a little bit, just for myself, to kind of get a feel for what the big concerns are or not. I'm a little nervous about it, because some comments are very general. You know, I'm against the project, I'm for the project. Some comments are very specific about specific issues. Some comments are on issues that aren't even really addressed here, you know? It's not... It won't be perfect, but if that's what you're asking for, it's just sort of a grouping.
That's...
But understand, it's not a...
It's maybe not always apples to apples.
It's not like a vote. Everyone's voted on this or that.
Yeah.
It's just trying to collect the detailed comments.
The only reason why I'd say this, but I understand, so it's not always apples to apples.
Right.
Yeah. But it would be kind of, for me, anyway, and maybe if I'd read the Padlet, I'd have more feeling of it, but I could really read, see this, and say, oh, seems... Sounds good. And then a point that we didn't think about is brought up, and I said, oh, but that's, you know, just like we would do with typical public hearings, or we can listen to the point that we may not have thought through on it.
And I think the other challenge is, yes, there's the Padlet. There's two different Padlets. There's discussion notes from community meetings. There are discussion notes from stakeholder meetings. There are comments made here. So there's so many different... They've been given to you in so many different ways, and there's letters, and there's emails. I could see that some sort of grouping of those could be very useful, as long as you understand it is not perfect. I'm not trying to reiterate every single comment given.
Well, that would... I know for me, that would be helpful.
I agree, and I think that's where I was going at, and I know that might be a little bit of a chore.
No, no. It's... I mean, it was helpful to me to start down there.
Okay, yeah. I mean, it is a big piece of what we change, yeah. I mean, we're all not going to do that, right?
I would just stress again that it should never be considered a substitute for actually reading the actual comments themselves. I guess that's where I'm trying to add.
Robin, is the... Is motivation or mechanism behind cladding removal being partial demolition? I'll leave it as an open-ended question. Can you talk a little bit about the reasons why this would be important, whether it be to staff or just in general, in terms of preservation?
Well, so where it started is from public comment. There were several instances where people have taken off all of the siding, and we've gotten emails from concerned citizens that that is essentially full demolition, because in addition to the siding, it's not just about the siding, but that was, you know, rather than look at the whole thing, we thought that was the most important piece. But the siding comes off, the window trim comes off, the windows come off, the doors come off. The interior is completely gutted, which is not something we saw in the earlier years of what you've done. You really don't have anything left of the house. And so, again, it started with public comment, people emailing us and expressing concern, and that was the reason to add it to the draft. Is that... Does that answer your question?
It does, and I guess that supposes, then, that there is no consequence to doing that.
Right. In the conservation zoning overlay.
In conservation zoning overlay, there's no consequence to having done that, and therefore, you would potentially lose character-defining elements of... To me, removing cladding is a little bit like saying, yeah, I really don't like carpet in this bedroom. I'd rather do hardwood floors. If you do a stand-and-finish hardware floor, okay, now I got to take the trim up and the quarter around, and geez, I got to shim the door, you know, I got to shave the doors off pretty soon. You know, you don't even realize the kind of project you're getting into and how many things that trickles down and sort of changes. And a cladding removal, even the addition of a half-inch sheathing, you know, the inclusion of a vapor barrier is negligible or nothing, but certainly adding half-inch sheathing and then reapplying all that, assuming that you could still find moldings or any other number of items, is not an insignificant thing to do to a historic asset, even if it isn't a conservation overlay.
Well, and just to, I mean, add on to my comment from before, I mean, the reasoning behind it, like, that reasoning, I am... Would be behind review of cladding because of that, but I'm wondering if there's a... Like, is there a way to... I don't know. When it's... When someone's replacing cladding and it's... The character of the historic character remains, that's one thing. When it's just stripping everything away and you're starting over, like you said, with new doors, doors, trim, windows, everything, I don't know. Is there some sort of way to better define it, to approach both sides of it?
Sure. Procedurally, is there a way, Robin, if, you know, if a permit weren't gotten to remove the siding from a house? Is it required? I mean, what would be the recourse that, you know, after the fact, to chase down what was the reveal? Did it have something unique about the molding or any other number of things? You all haven't documented houses to that degree in conservation districts. And, you know, this may be... Had never... May have never happened, so we don't want to invent, you know, a guideline for a single case. Might happen in 20 years, but I guess I'm trying to figure out that this is the mechanism to have the discussions before all that happens, as opposed to after the fact, and you're trying to recreate and/or rely on, you know, the best or worst intentions of any given applicant, which we have zero control over.
So if the... If you go to that extent and say, this is a part of these guidelines to review cladding, and someone takes it down without a permit, it would just be like any other project that happens without a permit? We try to work with the applicant to correct it and to the best that we could, get pictures if we have them, if we don't, you know? I mean, every case is going to be a little bit different. I will say that I completely understand where those who are against this part of the draft are coming from. All these overlays have been sold on the fact that we're not reviewing replacement siding, windows, doors, and roofing. It's one thing to say, oh, we're going to require this kind of solar panel or this kind of skylight or whatever, or not, but this would be a fairly big departure from how the overlays were... The conservation overlays were established.
You know, I don't think you see too many of these, but I think the motivation is that there's more of it happening, and to have a review of it doesn't seem unreasonable under a neighborhood conservation overlay.
But I think...
I say unreasonable.
Yeah. I mean, having... I don't know what our position is or has... Would be in a conservation overlay if someone... But we're not reviewing replacement of siding. In terms of putting sheathing on it, and I can't argue with, is a house with sheathing and vapor barrier on it more modern in terms of its control of the environment that we live in? That's a hard one to argue against. Now, we're here to balance that versus, you know, versus the preservation of historic assets in the community. So I sense... I understand the fear on the part of an applicant or those who, you know, who are in these conservation overlays, and even people who develop within them as to what standard they're going to be held to, or whether something's possible or not possible.
And Leslie, that brings us to the materials section, which is primarily an italicized list of appropriate and inappropriate materials. It's not best practices, really, to include specific materials in the guidelines, because there's something that can change pretty rapidly over time, and new materials become available. So we wanted that ability to update and revise that list. However, it's also helpful for an applicant to know what has already been approved or disapproved, and so we wanted to add it in. So that's the reason the materials section is all italicized, and it's more fleshed out from what it is now.
Is there explanatory text of that nature in the, you know... Generally, blah, 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 whatever the language is, but because materials change, the following is in list, while not exhaustive, you know?
Right, yes.
Okay.
So for next month, we have on our schedule to discuss new construction for infills and additions, and then in February, to discuss outbuildings. Those discussions will probably be a little more lengthy than these first few. Is there anything else? We do have training today, because we need to get 30 minutes in to accomplish what our Rules of Order and Procedure say we should do each year, but before we head into that, is there anything... Any other comments, discussion items regarding the draft that you wanted to talk about or point out, or?
Maybe I shouldn't ask it, but I'm going to ask it. Ben Mosley. Right. Okay. I'm doing the preface there. You know, those who have submitted they want to opt out. How does that look? Would that have to be approved if that were to be? I mean, we're, you know, we're hearing that, and...
Yeah, I mean, again, this is still just information gathering. In March, you might decide not to approve any of it. You might decide to approve the consolidation, but leave those out. You might decide to leave out more than those that have been asked. You might decide... I mean, I definitely think you'll be looking at a revision based on all this public comment you're receiving, but right now, we're still just in the fact-gathering stage.
Right.
Nothing's... Nothing's on the table, really, yet.
Right. You know, again, with all this work that's been put into this by stakeholders and neighborhood associations and, you know, that's been a lot... That's a volume of work and time. And, I mean, I can't see where we would just say no, but I don't know what we're going to vote on in March, but...
To me, the discussions are valuable, no matter what happens.
Well said.
I just said this at the last meeting, and they've already left, but for Martin and Caitlin, their comments have been so specific, which is so helpful. It is very helpful to have comments from the public that are that specific. And for the groups that are wanting to opt out, and we, you know, kind of posed this last time, but we would like to hear specifics, you know? What are the specific issues, not just where opposed? So I just put that out there again. Thank you, yes. And I would say, too, that there's some of the stakeholders who are designers and architects who have been really great about going beyond just commenting, but really working with us to try to come up with solutions and are continuing to do that, and the staff is very appreciative of that.
And to get that in a written letter form like Martin did and several others is really helpful for us to look at it as a commission, too.
Yeah. In that case, we will move on, but I do want to ask one quick question, just because I'm afraid I'll forget it at the end. The packets came to you via Dropbox and another share site. Does anyone have a preference? Were you not able to... I know one commissioner couldn't get to that one. Do you want to keep it on Dropbox? Do you want to keep it on Dropbox? Do you want... Either way.
Yeah, I like the SharePoint. It worked better for me, but...
I like SharePoint.
Okay. So maybe... I don't think anyone else got a code, so I'll just work with IT to figure out what's padding.
David, commission... Mine went to my spam. You didn't go to your spam? Okay. Mine went to my spam, but I caught it there, but...
Yes, we can share the PowerPoint with you. It's, to give you a little introduction, Melissa will probably do that, but it's the basis of the legal basis for the work that you do. It actually kind of...
Oh, me, too.
It's pretty fascinating.
I'm pretty excited about this part, actually.
But Chairman, you may want to close the public hearing before... Not the public hearing for the design guideline consolidation, but just for the meeting itself.
All right. So for public record, we are continuing to open public hearing for the design guidelines, and we're closing the public hearing for the agenda. Yeah. Meeting is adjourned. All right. Thank you.
Who's my clicker? Did somebody walk off the clicker?
Oh, I haven't, sorry.
Thank you. Okay. So this is my very merry overview of historic preservation law. I'm going to go through the kind of three-level...
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.